Testing. Health and Justice Building. Wish we could see you?
They have video.
Have video, no audio.
Video and audio is good.
Audio is good. Okay, great.
Thanks, Richard.
Well, thanks again. This is actually quite the sight to see with everyone coming here. There's so many in the other location. And I think it's a good reminder to know that there's so many in our community that care about county issues. And also, I think all of us on the commission would recognize that this shows that you also care deeply about how your tax dollars are spent, and that we need to treat those sacredly as stewards of taxpayer dollars. So, as we get started, as usual, we're beginning with a prayer reading or a thought that will be offered by Paul Jones, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which Randy Edwards from Veteran Services in the County will lead us in. Paul.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we thank Thee for the favorable circumstances that we find ourselves in. We thank Thee for our community here in the valley protected by the snow-capped mountains. We thank Thee for the sense of community that we feel in our communities here in Utah County. We pray and ask Thee, Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, that Thou would bless our decision-makers with wisdom. We ask Thee to please bless each of us as we participate to varying levels in this meeting, that Thou would bless us with a sense of peace and calmness as we discuss and deliberate our local government. And we say these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, as we come together at an open forum, remember our freedoms that we have, the right that we have this evening. Would you join me as American citizens in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Paul. Let's walk through the agenda for the evening. We will begin, I'll just walk through the whole, because this could end up being a long meeting, for those of us who've been in part of these. And I think that our goal is going to be as orderly as possible so that everyone will have the chance to speak according to their desire. First, we're going to hear an introduction and overview of the truth in taxation process by our Clerk Auditor's Office. Then, we're going to have a little bit of a surprise. You see, we're using this time clock. We're going to kind of have a demonstration with that. This is going, one of the first times we're using that here in this meeting to try to keep us moving through this. Then, we're going to have comments from each of the commissioners on the budget that were going to be limited to 15 minutes each. This is a little bit, all of us have done town halls on the budget. This is not going to be free-flowing Q and A, just because of the time limits. We will then move into the public hearing. There is, there was a sign-up sheet that was going around, and hopefully, all of you had a chance to see it. If not, the way we're going to do this is only those who actually sign up will be able to make comment. We reserved one to two hours for public comment. The reason that's a range is we're waiting to see how many people sign up. And we just want to make an accommodation. So, at some point, all these lists will come up, and we'll be able to set the exact amount of time to give an appropriate time limit to each person making a public comment. So, please, if you haven't seen this yet, find it an opportunity, because at some point, and that's how we're going to bring those from the Health and Justice Building over, we will actually read the names of those when it's your opportunity to speak. And then, we have the agenda items for the adoption of the budget and the certified rate. So, with that, we can jump right into some of the historical process. You all received a notice. What did that mean exactly? And what is the historical and legal context for property tax policy in Utah County? And I'm going to take a little bit of a, you know, this is not necessarily typical, but I'm going to give a formal introduction to Josh Daniels, who will be providing that overview. Josh has been very involved in this process, and you're going to see later on he's going to have another role in this meeting. So, I'll introduce him. He serves as our Chief Deputy Clerk Auditor, where he works with the county budget, finance, and audit teams, as well as the county election division. Prior to working with Utah County, Josh served in a variety of public policy and government relations roles at the federal, state, and local level. Josh served his country, our country, in the United States Marines, including a combat tour to Fallujah, Iraq. He studied economics and political science at BYU and received his law degree from the University of Houston. He's a father of four and resides in Saratoga Springs, where he enjoys coaching his children's wrestling team. A little later, some of those facts might become relevant. But for now, Josh, and can we set this timer for 10 minutes? Is Justin, who's controlling the, there we go. Okay, we're going to set this clock for 10 minutes. And Josh, the time is yours.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. Can we get the truth in taxation and certified tax rate presentation up?
Maybe we should pause the time while the presentation's coming up.
We can't hear.
Thank you.
So, while the presentation's getting up, basically, what, a couple of slides we're going to share is about what truth in taxation is. So, tonight is what is sort of commonly in Utah known as a truth in taxation hearing. Truth in taxation is essentially the phrase that's given to a law that was passed in Utah in 1985, taking effect in 1986, that became a limitation on local government when local government raises property taxes. There's different ways that other states have, you know, tried to pass different kinds of limitations or processes or restrictions on how local government changes its property tax rates over time. You may have heard, like in California, there's Prop 13. Or in Colorado, there's the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, known as the Tabor rules. So, truth in taxation is the word we kind of give to this whole process. Some of the core pillars, though, of this reform is that it places a process, a required process, on local governments, that's counties, school districts, cities, special districts, whenever they want to change their property tax revenue. So, what happens is there's a required public notice that has to go out to the public if and when, maybe you don't have the presentation. It should be a PowerPoint, like a multi-page. There we go. It's one of those. Yep. So, we're talking about slide two right now. So, the truth in taxation process requires a public notice to be mailed to the public by a certain deadline so that the public is aware of the hearing. Now, the hearing, essentially what's happening tonight, is actually a hearing to receive. It's a hearing where the public has the right to come and share their comments. But specifically, the business on the agenda tonight is to adopt a budget for next year. Based on what budget the commissioners set for next year, there's then a determination about what tax rate would apply for property taxes next year, in 2020. And so, another feature of the truth in taxation law was something called certified tax rates, and we'll get to that in a minute. But there's a deadline each year for local government to send out these notices. And the notice has language on it that's prescribed by law and approved by the State Tax Commission. So, in the case of the notice that was recently mailed out this year, there has to be a meeting, and for the county, that meeting takes place in October. And there's a deadline in October where the commission has to set a cap. And that cap would be the total percent increase on the certified tax rate for the following year. But that's before the commission passes a budget. And so, you don't necessarily, as a commission, know what your budget is going to be for next year, because you haven't passed it, because that's what you're doing tonight. But you have to guess at what you think the maximum budget might be so that you can calculate the maximum rate that you would set as a cap, as a percent increase, to next year's tax rate. So, the notice that went out that said, you know, the commission intends to raise the certified tax rate, you know, up to 100%, that's what that notice was about, and that's why that notice was sent out. So, then, the next step of that process, so that starts in October, that the commission has to make that determination, is that by the end of the year, by a deadline in December, which we're operating under here, the commission then has to adopt their budget. And then, whatever that budget is will determine what next year's tax rate will be. So, whatever budget you adopt, the revenue that you plan on collecting from property tax rates impacts what the ultimate rate will be. And that's because of the certified tax rate, which is another unique feature. Let's go to the next slide. So, first off, what we're talking about tonight is the county portion of property taxes. So, there are many local government entities that collect property taxes, the school district being the largest. In this particular pie chart, this is a very typical example in Utah County. This shows the breakdown of which local government entities collect what portion of the total property taxes that any given tax owner or any property owner pays. So, in this case, you know, you're almost, you know, you're So in this case, you know, you're almost, you know, you're 65, 70% to the, to the school district, there's a portion that goes to the municipality that's in blue, there's a portion that goes to the county general government, which is in purple. So what we're talking about tonight is the county commission setting the budget that will determine the tax rate that will apply to that purple portion of the pie, which right now, on average, the typical homeowner, 6.6% or so of their property taxes goes to Utah County. So that's the portion that we're talking about. Right now, the, the average family pays about $134 a year to the county, and that's the portion of the rate that we're discussing. The next slide gets into the details of the certified tax rate. So something that's very interesting about how certified tax rates work in Utah is that the rate that you pay in property taxes goes down when the value of your house rises. And the reason for this is because the local government that receives that revenue is only allowed to receive essentially the same amount of revenue from all of the taxpayers in each subsequent year, unless they choose to try to collect more revenue. If they collect more revenue, then the rate could rise. But what happens is, as property values increase, the relative rate of tax that you pay for the property that's valued goes down. So in this example, just using this example as kind of an illustration mathematically of how this works, let's assume that in year one, there was a million dollars in total property values across the whole county. And let's just pretend, for sake of argument, that the tax rate was 50% of those million dollars. And so, in this case, the county is receiving, you know, $500,000 in revenue. Well, in year two, if all the property values went up, it's a really hot real estate market, and the, the values doubled, then the rate would actually be cut in half. So your property tax rate from year one to year two would go from a 50% rate to a 25% rate, and that's because your house doubled in value. And so in this mathematical example, the blue chart shows the doubling, year over year, this is a really hot market, of property values, and the total revenue stays the same, and so the relative rate goes down each year, which is why in year five, the rate would be 3.13%. So now, if we go to the next slide, this is actually the real data for Utah County. So what this shows is, for the last five years, from 2015 to 2019, the total value of all properties was between 20 and 30 billion dollars. And the amount of revenue that was collected by the county for tax revenue was, you know, significantly less than that. Just for purposes of the chart, I multiplied it by 100 so you could actually see it, otherwise it would be too small. But what, what you see here is two trajectory lines. The top line, that trajectory line, is the trajectory of increase in property value over time, the last five years. And just above that line, you see the tax rate. So the tax rate in 2015 was .087, and this year, 2019, it was .067. So the rate of property tax went down, the values went up, the total tax revenue also did go up, but it went up at a, at a, at a much less sort of rate there. So over on the right, there's some bullets. So actual property tax revenues increased 19.3%, but the value of property increased 60%, that's why you see such a difference in the trend. Over that same year, population and inflation in Utah County increased 24.4%. So now, this gets to the next feature of what happens oftentimes in, in property tax in Utah, is the property tax rate doesn't keep up with inflation or population, it only follows basically new properties. The, the next chart you're looking at here is historic property tax rates over time, so that just shows you that over time, the property tax rate goes down, that's largely due to the appreciation in the value of the properties that, that went up. The next slide, this shows the county's revenue over time. So the county general fund is funded from four main types of revenue, property tax being the, the base there in blue, sales tax, which is red, intergovernmental transfers, which is orange, and all other revenue, which is green. This is fees and fines and, and other kinds of other revenues. So the main two sources of revenue are property and sales tax. You see, sales tax there kind of came online in 1997, it's because the legislature didn't used to share sales tax with local government entities. The purple trend line on the top is the impact of inflation and population over time. So if you go back to 1986, which is where the purple line begins, and you track inflation over time, and you predict where you thought revenue might have been, that's where the purple line is. And what you see is the, in the blue, in the blue section, there's kind of a leveling off in the last 10 years. And what that shows is that property tax revenue in Utah County has not grown significantly relative to population, not relative to sales tax, or some of the other revenue sources. And then we'll go to the last chart. This is another way of thinking about revenue, so the county collects revenue through those various sources. This shows the total revenue as a share of total personal income. So if you think of total personal income in Utah County as essentially like a GDP figure, this blue line shows that as a share of $10,000 of personal income, total revenue has gone down as a share of income. What this means is that the average person in Utah County pays less of their total personal income to Utah County over the last 30-plus years. The little red line there shows what the net effect would be on revenue as a share of personal income under a tax, a proposed tax increase.
50-second warning.
Okay, and, and then, and then the other charts I have, I didn't really plan to discuss, but they're just kind of additional information about Utah County versus other counties. So this shows, for example, Salt Lake, Davis, Weber, and Utah County. The blue is our general tax revenue for our general fund. So it kind of shows how we have stacked up historically in recent years to the other three Wasatch-front urban counties. And, and that's all I had to share with you tonight, commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Okay, we will move into demonstration of this time clock, how it will work for both the commissioners and for those giving public comment. So Josh, I'll also let you lead this section.
Okay, great, so we've got a time clock here, and, and the amount of time that we're going to allot to each speaker is going to depend on, on you commissioners, and depend on the number of public comments, and how you choose to divide it. But we can set the clock, and so if we just set the clock for a minute, if you'll, go ahead and do that, Justin. And when the clock runs out of time, there'll be an audible beep from the clock itself. And, you know, when, hopefully when you're standing at the, at the podium, you can see the clock, it should be visible, and, and then when it beeps, then your, your time is up, and we'd ask you to wrap up your comments to allow other people time to go ahead and share their comments. If things get really out of hand, we might have to, you know, kind of impose some additional notice that your time is up. So I brought a friend of mine, anybody familiar with Terry Tate? Terry Tate, the office linebacker? Terry Tate, the office linebacker? So Terry Tate, the office linebacker's on our stop sign. So if we really need to, we'll wave the stop sign, that's when you know Terry Tate's coming, coming, coming after you to tell you your, your time is up. And we're not going to do a coin toss, but just in case, I did come prepared to, to sort of referee the time. It's going to beep, when it beeps, then I'm, I'm out of time, and you have to come tackle me. So, but, we've got the, just, just in case, I, I brought the, I brought the wrestling uniform, and, and I don't think we'll need the whistle, but just in case, if we've got any foul balls, any of those Danny Ainge basketball elbows, or any, any other foul, we'll, we'll make sure to, to keep, keep some good order here. But I think it's an important opportunity for everybody to be heard, just be respectful of other people's time, and, and we've got a clock here to help you, help you do that.
Thank you. Okay, so our next section is comments from, from each of the three commissioners, and I think that we'll make sure, so, so the referee over here will make sure that we stick to our 15 minutes each, and then, but let's make sure that everyone, the clock doesn't begin until you have your presentation ready, if you have presentation materials. So I think Commissioner Ivy, you'll, you'll be up first.
Sounds great, thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you for coming this evening, but more importantly, I want to thank those who took the time to reach out to my office, to attend the town hall, especially those who took time to make appointments and come in and visit. That's where we've been able to have significant dialogue and talk in detail about the budget process and the unique challenges facing Utah County in our fiscal situation.
Start the clock!
And, and what I would like to emphasize to you tonight, start the clock, there we go, what I'd like to emphasize to you this evening is, is part of the process, and, and that I'm thankful that you're part of that process, and that each of us here have a unique task, and it's a difficult task. But I'm just like the rest of you. Tonight, I'm sitting up here as your elected official, but a couple months ago, I got a postcard in the mail. And that postcard reminds me that I pay over $6,000 every single year in property taxes. And I get that blessing because I've worked my whole life on a ranch, where I've dedicated myself to, to building a business and, and working my tail off since I was a little kid. And, and I live right next to my mom and dad, who are on a fixed income. And we've sat in our house, and we've had those hard conversations about what government's supposed to be, what government's supposed to provide, and, and what the appropriate levels of service and taxation are. And there's a reason that my family's chosen to live in Utah County, and that's because Utah County gets it right. Utah County keeps government servicing constitutionally required services. As you go through and you look at our, what our general fund funds, they are things that are mandated by the state law and the Constitution of the United States. As you go through Utah County, you're going to not find some things. You're not going to find golf courses, you're not going to find rec centers, and other unnecessary entities that the county owns. You'll find a few parks, and one convention center, and none of your general fund money, none of your property tax money, none of your sales tax money goes to fund those parks. They come through a separate entity that's a TRCC fund. So every time anybody eats at a restaurant, or rents a car, or hotel in this county, that's how we pay for those, those parks. And we keep those at a minimum, because we get it right here. And I think that that's critical to note, that what we're funding are essential government services. Now, this is kind of a deja vu moment, because we were here last year, and last year, I proposed something that I felt was reasonable. I said, "Why don't we freeze our tax rate? Because we're falling behind, because we're not keeping pace with, with the growth." Yeah, we've had all this growth, and yeah, the growth's bringing in new money, but we're not keeping pace. So why don't we pay the exact same percentage this year as we paid last year, which brings in a little bit more money to the county, instead of continuing a cycle of deficit spending? We said, "No." We said, "Okay." Well, in deficit spending, when you dig a hole, you just keep digging until you stop digging. And at some point in time, we got to stop digging and start to climb out. Well, the first place we stop digging is we cut. And, and tonight, we'll discuss in detail two very similar budgets, because if you go through the expenditures of, of the budgets that have been developed and presented by Commissioner Ainge and Commissioner Lee, you'll find something real interesting. We all agree on the expenditures and the cuts, with the exception of, of a few oddities here and there. Now, we have some disagreement on, on the method of paying for those, and I'll touch on those in a moment. But we've cut. In fact, we've cut nonessential things like our USU extension contract, we've got rid of the Miss Utah County pageant program, we're phasing out our funding of the, of the county fair, because those are things we found that are nonessential. I worked with my departments, like Public Works, and we went through and we found and cut savings in that department. We scrubbed those things, and we're still short. Now, there's something interesting then, that says, "Well, why in the heck are we short?" I think the Utah Taxpayers Association actually answered that question really, really well, and I want to read you the statement that they offered. The Utah Taxpayers Association, which is probably the most conservative taxpayer advocacy group in, in the nation, definitely in the state of Utah, said this. "After examining the budget proposal from Utah County Commissioners for 2020, and studying the history of property tax rates and spending for the last several decades in the county, the Utah Taxpayer Association believes that an adjustment in the certified rate is appropriate. That being said, we do not agree that 100% increase in the tax rate is needed." And I agree with that. "Due to a lack of foresight for decades by previous members of the commission, Utah County has only once in 33 years taken steps to restore purchasing power in their property tax revenue. That was done 23 years ago. That failure to act has now put the county at a tipping point. The Utah Taxpayer Association often supports taxing entities going through the truth in taxation process from time to time, to recapture inflation by publicly making their case to the taxpayers. These adjustments have only ever been undertaken by Utah County since the truth in taxation law took effect more than 30 years ago. Due to this, Utah County's tax rate has dropped 72%. This is not sustainable. New growth has benefited the county in recent years, bringing with it new property tax revenue. New growth has enabled property tax revenues to grow 196% in real dollars. It's a good thing. But here's the catch, while population grew 269% over that same period. In other words, Utah County property taxes have grown 73% slower than population and inflation combined, while total statewide property taxes have increased 46% faster than inflation and population combined. Because of this, Utah County has been deficit spending by over 8 million over the last several years, avoiding fiscal responsibility. Again, this is not sustainable." When I ran for office, we had a debate just right at the Alps Lodge, down the road right here, and there were a couple people in that meeting, and they, they, you know, do what you do at those kind of events, and they kind of pinned me in the corner, and tapped on me a little and said, "Will you ever raise taxes in Utah County?" And I told them the truth. I said, "If the data dictates that it's necessary, and it becomes essential for the long-term stability of our county, yes, because I believe in fiscal responsibility." And fiscal responsibility means that as a legislative body, we have a responsibility to ensure that your tax dollars are going to essential government services mandated and showcased by the Constitution, and that we match those services with the appropriate level of taxation. And that's what we're here tonight to do. We're here tonight to balance a budget in a fiscally responsible manner, in a manner that ensures the level of taxation is the minimal required to ensure that the statutory obligations are met. Now, part of my responsibility is to be your representative, and so I've had the opportunity to listen to you, and I want to share some of the viewpoints that I've received from the citizens of this county, and recognize, we've got over 600,000 of them now. I've had very angry people call my office, and, and they've said, "Cut, cut, cut." One guy even, when we're talking about various areas, said, "I don't care if the lawyers have to have 400 cases a year, cut their damn salaries." I had another individual, she called up, and she says, "I appreciate you being willing to pay taxes, or raise taxes, and I actually think that they should be slightly higher in Utah County, because I believe we should have a county library system, and that we should have a county recreational program." I don't agree with that, but I'm just trying to showcase you some of the things people have said. I had another really interesting call, and this was from a gentleman, and he said something really that struck interesting with me. He said, "You know, the LDS Church has four, almost five buildings in this valley. Each of them are worth over $30 million apiece, so well over $150 million in simply four buildings, not to mention all the other properties they own. I personally feel like that organization actively worked with my government agency to suppress my rights as an individual, and inflict their morality upon me. But you give them a tax break." Now, I don't agree, I think that we should keep those as, as tax-free entities, because I believe in religious freedom. But he brings up a valid point. However, half of Provo is owned by a nonprofit organization that's not contributing. Most of the dollars we're discussing tonight would be covered by that type of a, of a tax. Now, again, I'm not advocating you that. What I'm trying to showcase is, what's my responsibility as your representative? Those are the various viewpoints that I've heard from people. And so it comes back to one thing for me, and that's my oath of office. When I was elected, I took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the State of Utah and the United States of America. And within that Constitution, I was given power to set tax levies with And within that constitution, I was given power to set tax levies, which we'll do tonight. And I have a responsibility as your representative to ensure that those tax dollars are going to what I believe are truly essential government services. And as we look through how Utah County operates, I believe that's the case. Now, you'll hear that we maybe should lean on the federal government for four and a half million dollars to help balance our budget. I'd remind you, the federal government's $23 trillion in debt and they have 127 trillion in unfunded liability. Now, I don't think that fiscal responsibility says we should depend on an organization that indebted and count on them for money to try and balance our budget. I don't think that we should sell one-time assets to pay for ongoing expenses. I think we should cut where we can and that we should pay for the essential services of government. And in the details of the budget that we've worked through as a commission over the last two months in extensive meetings, we've found cuts. Again, as you go through the details on both proposals, the, the expend, the expected expenses are dang similar. The difference is how do we pay for that? And I believe that fiscal responsibility dictates that we set a tax rate that is appropriate to fund those essential government services. And I've got over three and a half minutes left and I'm going to be done.
As frugal Dugle would say, "I'm going to be efficient with your time." Frugal with your time. Okay. It's now my turn, but we will wait until I get the thumbs up that the IT system is ready. Okay. I will jump, I will want to jump right into the numbers and give you some details tonight, but I'll, I'll start by sharing what might seem like a completely unrelated experience. A few years ago, I, on a Saturday morning, took my oldest son, uh, who's here actually, to his basketball game. And I was, we brought his younger brother, Oliver, with us. And I kind of, we got to the gym, I was just kind of focused on the game and his younger brother found some other kids his age and was kind of playing in the corner of the gym. They started horsing around and at some point, he tried to jump off of a bleacher. And when he did so, there was a screw protruding out that punctured his arm. And as he fell, it continued to tear open his arm as he fell. And it was one of the most disgusting gaping holes I've ever seen in my life. As the parents rushed to help, you could see the different tissues in his arm and one of my friends ripped off his shirt and wrapped a tourniquet around his arm and we threw him into my car and were rushing him to the ER. And as we did, I, I was saying a prayer that he's not going to lose his arm, he's not going to bleed out or have permanent nerve, nerve damage. But I could hear him in the back and what he was saying was, "Dad, don't let them give me stitches. I don't want to get stitches." And, you know, that has always stuck with me of the different perspectives we can have. You know, stitches are not pleasant, but there are some situations that are so severe that they are the absolute best-case scenario and also the remedy that will avoid further issues like amputation or infection down the road. So I'm going to spend my remaining time talking about why I believe this county needs financial stitches. And because I'm giving one diagnosis and there's another commissioner who's giving another, I will spend some of my time pointing out why I believe Commissioner Lee has given the wrong diagnosis and why his prescription of just letting it, ignoring it, acting like it's not a problem will, will only lead to further pain down the road. So let's point out, here's the budget system. This shows 2018. This is kind of not really the start. We had had deficit spending a, a year or two before this as well, but I'll start with 2018. You can see that we had 33 million in property tax revenue? If people can see this? So yeah, just go zoom. Hopefully this can be seen. And we brought in 77 million and spent 79. So that obviously does not add up in any of our home budgets or businesses. That's not going to work. But, you know, there's some fiscal sickness here, but still treatable. There's a way to get out of this $2 million deficit in 2018. So if you go to the next, so just imagine being on the county commission at that time, which I was not, but I did attend those hearings. And what would we have done? What would you have done? My guess is that most of us in this room would have said, "Cut spending." If you've got a $2 million deficit. Hey, I like that. All right? And look, we didn't even need to cut spending. If you look, they had the benefit that not all of us have. Many are on fixed incomes, I know. But they were actually projecting an increased income to $82 million. So they could have just held expenses flat, right? I, I don't know if I stand up here, if I walk through this, uh, if you'll be able to hear me, so I guess I'll do it from here. But if they had held the expenses at 79 million, we would have had a $3 million surplus. And, but instead, what did the county commission do? Increased spending by almost $15 million to project a $12 million deficit. That, right there, is a perfect example of fiscal, of no fiscal responsibility. And so then we go into the, the next year. Which actually, by the way, no, go, go back. This is when I came into office. So this budget had been passed, we're projecting a, a huge deficit. And now I come in and I knew all year long that there was going to be a deficit. So what was my focus? Cut spending. And every meeting that I ever had, I would sit down with departments and they were really frustrated with the line of questioning that I gave because it usually went, "What are you doing? Do we need to fund this department? Why does this department even exist? Is there waste?" And, uh, if you've worked in government, you know that that's frustrating for many people. Also had vendors come in who've been with the county for 20 years and they thought they were just coming for a good old cozy meeting. And I would say, "I need you to explain what value you bring to the county." So, "What do you mean? Why are you asking all these tough questions? We've been doing this forever. If you're not helping us provide an essential government service more efficiently than we otherwise could, then we'll need to terminate this contract." And people thought I was crazy from all over. I mean, I had people from the governor's office call, I had people in the community, lobbyists saying, "Who is this guy that keeps wanting to rock the boat and cut expenses?" And the truth was, I just knew that we had deficit spending and I don't believe in deficits and I believe it's my job to work for the taxpayers of Utah County. And so all year long, I was trying to find cuts, but guess what? They really added up to less than a million dollars. So now we get into this year's budget cycle, we go to 2020. And at the start of this cycle, we had our chief budget officer come and present. And she said that if you just take the existing employees that we already have and some of the other obligations that we are already in place, so no new requests from other departments, we are fun, we have a 10 and a half million dollar deficit. And that would result, if you look at the bottom here, in a 37% increase. It's a property tax increase. Then came in the additional requests, if you go to the next one. So this is where they said, "We've gathered all of the requests from the various departments and they're saying that to do their jobs effectively, they need 17 million additional dollars. Plus, it would be prudent to put some money away for rainy day fund. It would be prudent to put away money into capital projects fund." Which, if we had more time than we did tonight, I would talk about how deficient we are in capital projects. And by the way, we have some liabilities in the form of lawsuits that are coming due on us that we need to set some money aside to be ready to pay. And that comes out to 36.5 million, which would result in 127% property tax increase. And I think everyone on the commission at that time said, "There's no way that we're going to approve this full amount. We are going to have to find cuts." And I think we all knew that the biggest area was going to be these new requests. The baseline is going to be incredibly difficult because we know the pressures that are on our departments. And so if you go to the next one, what I have proposed is this 10 and a half million remains in place. I'm only funding directly 2.4 million of the new requests. There's another 2.5 million that I said, "You know what? I don't want to fund directly, but we should have them just in case, sitting in an account, ready to, um, go if everything comes in plan." We, we implemented outcome-based budgeting and so th, these are some areas where we hold that money back, but we say, "If you're able to do X, Y, and Z department, then maybe you can get this funding." Or maybe things don't come, pan out, or maybe the state legislature, we're able to get a bill passed where some of these unfunded mandates go away, then we don't need to fund those. And so that money comes back to the county coffers. I still set aside for the future because I think it's prudent and it comes down to a $19 million gap. Which by the way, this is what's interesting, is Commissioner Lee, on his plan, still recognizes that there's a big gap. So I think his number, as we'll see when he goes through, is still in the $16 million range, which would result in a 56% tax increase. Now, what's the difference? He's not necessarily saying a 56, but he's saying there's a $16 million gap. So the difference between my budget and his is that my budget actually balances and his does not. And we can go through that. Mine is reliable and his is misleading. So I'll give you just a couple of examples. This was from his presentation. I'm doing this because we're going to have public comment and I've received a lot of negativity from the emails that have been sent out criticizing our plan, people have seen this presentation, I think the public needs to know. So if you go down, just find the ICE contract. One of the areas where Commissioner Lee is saying he's going to fill the funding gap, but not raise taxes, is he's saying he's going to generate four and a half million dollars from having our jail enter into a contract with a federal government agency. And somehow that's going to magically create four and a half million dollars. This is an interesting historical case study that he will talk about. There are some interesting factors there, but that was three years ago. I can tell you right now, we've had the former sheriff, the current sheriff, say that this will never materialize to actually four and a half million dollars. This is a completely bogus number to have in the budget. So, um, and then, you know, then there's another one where he wants to fund, um, by selling a park to generate some money. And we'll see what Commissioner Lee has to say about that. But that's how he still is able to get to a same level of funding basically that we're talking about, a little bit less, but he's saying he's not doing it with a tax increase because there's a contract which doesn't exist, so that would be a tax increase or more deficit spending, or selling a park. And then go down Ezra. Really, this is actually one I want to give Commissioner Lee some credit on. The justice court, this is one area throughout this year where Commissioner Lee really did something very fiscally conservative. He identified a cut, he was willing to have the tough conversation. He said, "Hey, you know what? We don't need two judges here. This justice court is overstaffed." And, um, I don't know the process of actually winding down that staff. I don't know if we could do that immediately, but that is something that, that maybe we could look at. That's a cut that I do not have in my budget currently. So I, I just hope that we ask these questions because I would hate to see deficit spending continue. So if you go back, uh, to my final slide, this is what I'm going to be proposing in the budget tonight. This shows the increased property tax at 56 million coming in, operating budget of just over 100 million, which for the first time in four years would generate a surplus. It's nice to see that red gone in Utah County. Then, we do set aside too for a rainy day fund to replenish our reserves. By the way, we are getting close to being non-compliant with our reserve policy that the bond rating agencies have told us is helpful and a prudent practice. I'm setting aside for the future and I'm covering our risks. And for the first time in four years, this would be a balanced budget for Utah County. And what is the impact on each of you? If you look at this chart on the right, it would be for the average homeowner with an average price would be $85 per year or $7 per month. Now, I don't want to minimize that. That hurts. That stitches. And the question I have is, is it worth it? Will this be the thing that solves our fiscal problems, that finally balances our budget and gets us on a path to long-term sustainability in the county? It is. And if we don't fund our needs, especially if we do it with deficit spending or through one-time funding sources that are not sustainable, this isn't going to go away. We're going to have the same problem come back next year and the next year. So I, I look forward to hearing your comments. I, there's no upside for any of us to decide to do this, to send a notice out to each of you that says, "Hey, let's balance the budget and we have to do a property tax increase." It creates a lot of enemies. It creates a lot of, Commissioner, Ivy mentioned some of the calls. You had three different categories of calls. I would say the vast majority were in one category, very angry, very frustrated. And so I, I look forward to hearing you, letting you express your frustration. I hope that some of the comments will at least give you some pause and just have you say, "Okay, what is really needed? Are there things that need to be paid for in the county?" Maybe you didn't realize before you came here that the property tax rate in the county has been going down year over year over year. And that's not a sustainable path. The property rate has been decreasing, so I look forward to having that conversation. That's, we saw the Taxpayers Association. It's decreased 72% since 1986. So with that, thank you, thank you for being here and I'll turn the time over to Commissioner
Well, sometimes it's great to come to work and sometimes it's not. First off, I want everyone to know that I was against that 100% property, proposed property tax rate increase. and I voted accordingly. And also, um, I'm against this 69% property tax rate increase as well. Thank you for coming. I look forward to hearing your comments. That's what this is about. This is about hearing from you. It is a public hearing. I know there's a lot of explanation and, you know, trying to prove a point, but I'm going to try to keep my comments as brief as possible so we can get to more of your comments. Good people can hold different opinions. We all want the best for our county and our diverse experiences and perspectives can help to decide, to help us to decide upon the best path forward. It's critical that we respect everyone's opinion and do our best to understand their viewpoint. Unfortunately, when decisions are made in haste or when emotions run high, our minds can become muddled and we can do, and we don't always treat others as, you know, the way we should. We've seen it, felt it. At the start of this budget process, I was accused by a fellow commissioner of being against property tax rate increases before the number was even proposed. I would like to make my position absolutely clear on this. That's 100% correct. When, when it comes to raising taxes, my default answer is always no until other options have been thoroughly explored. Always, I started at the no position. I believe this view is widely held by a large majority of Utah County taxpayers. In fact, I would venture to say that the taxpayers expect us to do all we can with the resources we have before even considering more. This proposal to raise property taxes by 100%, up to 100% or 69%, in my opinion, mocks the fiscal conservative principles that have made this valley such a great place to live and raise our families. After exploring everything that I could during this shorter time period of time, a short timeframe frame that we have, I agree that a small tax rate increase might be necessary. But I cannot in good faith vote in favor of this proposal when there are other ways to raise funds, eliminate duplicity, duplicity in programs and, and scour every line of savings for efficiencies. and scour every line of savings for efficiencies. A well-known pioneer said, once said, "Use it up, wear it out, make it do, or do without." If we were to apply this wisdom to the management of county government, then we would need to do a proper inventory of our assets, our needs, before dipping further into the pockets of the Utah County citizens. We need to do better. It's easy to use the strong arm of government to throw other people's money at a problem. It's more difficult to actually govern with the interests of the citizens in mind. And so, I wrote that down so I could make sure and get it as straight as possible, because emotions do run high. I had the opportunity this last little while, a lot of you have called, a lot of you have emailed. I've tried to call back and email everybody or write a letter back, however it came in. But down the street from my house is a widow that I sat down with when she got this card, which a lot of you received. And, and she was scared. Now, I had to calm her down, because her first, her first thought was, was that the overall property tax, all of it, was going to increase, um, double. So, it scared her. And I think, you know, and I think maybe some of you felt the same way. So, as I sat there with her and kind of went down through and said, "This is exactly what's going on. This is how it's, how it happens, the county portion of it and so forth." She, she explained to me, she says, "You know, my husband's passed away. We have a piece of property, and we spent our lifetime trying to pay this off, trying to make it so that I, so we have a place to retire and, and come to. He was self-employed, and those who are self-employed know some of the pains that come from retirement of being self-employed. And, and he, as, as he was gone, they're trying to make it work. She's trying to make it work. She had to go in and rent her home out. They're looking at parsley, property, and they might have to self-divide some of the property and sell it off. She went into a reversed mortgage, and, which I don't think is a good idea, so, anyway. But she, she did. And she says, "I don't know how we're going to make it. I really don't." There are such varying degrees in this county. When it comes from some looking at it and saying, "$85? I spend that on a weekend, not a big deal, or on every night, that's not a big deal. Others, this is pushing them over the edge. We sit here and talk about numbers. We sit here and talk about these things all the time, as if, you know, it doesn't affect anybody. But it does. It does affect. We, we talk about it in the sense that, "You know what? Let's just go down through this, and we'll make it happen, and we'll rip the Band-Aid off, and we'll make it happen." But government is one of the only programs that can do that. And they do that at the end of a gun, because they come and they say, "You pay, or we take." And, 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 you know, instead of going through maybe a glide path where we start to find our way out in certain ways, let's do it right now. Why? Because we don't want to have to face you again next year, or the next year, or five years from now. And so, for me, I'm not going to sit here and go down through all the facts and figures with you. I mean, I've had town hall meetings, I've had cottage meetings. You see it out on the, you see it out on the, on YouTube or on our, you know, different proposals out there. And I'll be the first one to say, "Everything's not perfect. I'm trying to find ways. These are ideas for us to go through." But I think together we can, if we have the will and the courage to do so. And so, I want to leave as much time as possible to hear from you tonight, and hear what you have to say. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, so, we have some housekeeping items now. Can we start to round up all of the public comment sheets? Yeah, let's do that. So, it sounds like we will end up having about 120 to 130 people speak? Which, if we were to give, I mean, only a minute, that's, that's the two-hour block. And so, I guess I will look up here as a body.
I, I would, I mean, I, I think that we sent this notice out and asked people to come. I would, I would propose that we at least give them a minute and a half.
Minute and a half?
I'd like to have more, but at least a minute and a half to two minutes would probably be my proposal.
I'm definitely good with a minute and a half, and I concur. We're here to listen.
Okay.
And I want to, I believe people have the opportunity and the right to speak. And I want to afford them that.
Okay, so, let's set a few other ground rules then. So, we'll, we'll set 90 seconds for, for every comment. This will be, there's no Q and A, so we have budgeted at the end. Five minutes of concluding comments of the, at the end of the public hearing from each of the commissioners. But we will not respond during, I think we can make one exception. I would propose that we make an exception, that if someone wants to ask a question briefly, and they direct the question to a specific commissioner, then you can use the remainder of their 90 seconds to answer the question.
Can we actually do that during public comment? My understanding was we couldn't respond.
There's no restriction.
There we can.
We can.
That's fine.
So, does that, does that make sense?
Take the comments and move on. Let's go.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes. So, please state your name clearly, and, let's see, should we formally move? Make a motion to move into public hearing? Okay. So, and I will note that this public hearing is really for both agenda items, number six and seven. So, it's a public hearing that relates to a potential increase in the certified tax rate and for the 2020 budget.
I'll make a motion that we, that we move into the public hearing as, as listed on our agenda on number five.
Second?
We have a motion and second on number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in the public hearing for citizen input. And first, we have Pedro Gonzalez. Yep. We'll start, start reading. So, Pedro Gonzalez, Albert Harmer, Richard Wilkinson, Mark Oldman. It's possible that they're all in the Health and Justice Building, and so I'm going to move... Well, we're, we'll get this going. I just want to make sure that those others might be in the Health and Justice Building. So, I'm going to read another list, in case those are here. We got Kevin Giddens, Tony Bra, Daniel Bra, Todd Martin. So, maybe, maybe this list is still in the other building. So, any, I'm going to read those first eight again. Oh, we got someone coming up?
I'm Todd Martin, I'm one of the ones you mentioned.
Okay, yeah. Come on up. If your name has been said, then step up and say your name.
Todd Martin from Provo, and I appreciate your help. We know this is tough work, so for all of you, we appreciate what you're doing. I just want to share a comment that I heard in line while I was waiting to get in. I was standing by a man from Lehigh, a real estate developer named Gary Cooper, and he said, "Most of the county," and this is true, "is on green belt. Doesn't collect much tax. And there's a self-correcting mechanism in place already that will bring in more tax revenue as our county grows," which we're in a big growth mode, by the way. He said that this six acres that he recently developed was collecting $49 a year, or, yeah, $49 in tax on green belt. Turning it into houses, it became $56,000 of county revenue. In 10 years, that's a half a million. 20, it's a million. And so, the thing is, as the county grows, and this green belt becomes converted into residential high tax, relatively higher tax income, the county will be receiving much, much more funding. And I, he didn't think that had been calculated in here, and that is something that might be one additional reason to not raise taxes. But I do appreciate also the idea of going through with a fine-tooth comb, seeing whether we can really justify what's there.
Any other names that have already been called? Niels Fugel? Oh, we got someone from, Mark, yes, please.
My name is Mark Oldham. And as I came up, just so you're aware of how many people are, these are all petitions signed that I'll give you, of people that are against this increase, just so I can pass it on to you. But I represent more than just myself. I represent a company here in Utah Valley. I represent Liberty Press. We have 120 employees. And you haven't really stated, when you say $85 or whatever a month on my building, that has gone up from the appraisal. And by the way, if you want to buy my building for the amount they've appraised it, I'll sell it to you. Okay? But its current appraisal has gone up over $6 million over the last eight years. Okay? That's the appraisal that they give me, that they give me my rate on. And the increase proposed here is $20,000 for the year to increase. Okay? That's my increase. Now, if you're going to build a, a company like me that's in, I'm a manufacturer. I don't make money like computer companies. We make a small amount of money on a lot of volume. And some years, we don't make any money at all. We're not in a position to take this kind of a hit. So, what I do, which you failed to do, when you went in and tried to cut expenses, I have to. I actually make the tough, and it may be tough. You fire people that have worked for you for 20 years, which we have, our average employees work for us for over 20 years at Liberty Press. We like our people. But we have to eliminate them sometimes, because we have to balance our budget. I believe that there are cuts that can be made. I've, I've run companies before, and I've made cuts. They aren't easy. And it's not 85 bucks, it's $20,000.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read a bunch of names. If, are there anyone else whose, whose name's been called? Okay, come on up.
I'm just catching my breath, because I ran from the other place. Let me start by saying, I'm Kevin Giddens from Orem. And my first comment is that you gentlemen, ladies, have been put in office by the people, and I hope you remember to represent the people. Because your comments today may be individuals, you might receive a letter from someone, or, or two people, but it's not representing the people. Today, you're seeing the mass numbers, and the things that we're saying is more of our perspective. You also gave a, a average tax cut. You gave an example. My home is the average, and it's more than double. So, this is not a small increase. The taxes is double from me, and I don't mind, I don't think anyone minds paying taxes to support livelihood and support what needs to be done. But when it's more than double, that seems a breach in contract from you representing us. So, the bottom line is, if you're elected to represent us, represent us all, not just one or two individuals who make a comment to you and justifying your position by one or two comments. Represent the people who are here.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to go through a longer list, so we can make sure that we've got a pipeline here, folks. Tony Bra, Daniel Bra, Niels Fugel, Nelson Moke, Mike Sizer, Brian Burnecker, Brian Ferris, Pedro Gonzalez, Albert Harmer, Richard Wilkinson, Mark Is Dunn, William Bristol, Russell Gray, Steve Lingle, Peter Rowe, Pingman Edwin, Bliss Two. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to keep going until we start a list going here. John, I know, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get some more as well. John Johannesmick, Ralph Pinkham, Alan Christensen, Matt Ballard, Barry Johnson, Lavor Oldham, Russell from Payson. You know who you are? Can't read your last name? Rob Reynolds, Mark Weldon, and Rob Scott from Orem. I, I think, I can't read that one either. All right. That should give us a good list. Sorry, go ahead, sir.
That's fine. My name's Bliss Two, I live in Orem. I've lived here most of my life, I was born in Provo 67 years ago. My father has always been a businessman here. He died at 94. He owned a construction company, as well as apartments here in Provo, and the taxes keep going up. Our taxes go up on our home, on our rental properties. We end up passing that on to students who rent from us, who can hardly afford another increase. So, there's, you know, we know about inflation, we all do. But if government at the federal level is going to put us into 20 trillion, $23 trillion of debt right now, not counting the 200 trillion of unfunded benefits that they have out there, they're driving us to a hyperinflation. Every government at every level should be seeking to reduce its size. I think, I want to say that government leaders need to, at the lower levels, need to read about nullification. How do you nullify federal or state laws that are unconstitutional, that require spending on your part, but don't provide you any funding? What if they give you laws that are unconstitutional, and therefore it's outside their authority? James Madison said that you point out that's null and void. Is that my time? I've got so much more I'd like to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Bliss.
And thank you, Bill, for being against it.
My name was called, Alan Christensen from American Fork. I think the facts of the matter are these. One, while the property tax rate has supposedly been going down, my tax bill has been going up. Secondly, we have more government in this country than we can afford. And we need to address that issue. There are some, I, for years, I was a university administrator, and we had to go through tough decisions. And there are tough decisions that are going to have to be made. The interesting thing is, I got a notice from Social Security. This last week or so, my Social Security payment has supposedly gone up 1.6%. However, when they got through subtracting out what they were taking out, I will be getting $46 and a few cents less per month. My wife will be getting $153.11 less per month, after the government has raised our, their contribution to 1.6. I can't stand many more of those kind of adjustments. And most of us can't. And we have to remember that there are a lot of people who are on the edge. And you've heard that, and that's why the, the problems are the way they are. And it's a difficult thing to have to face, laying off people. I know I had to do it as a university administrator, and it's painful. But it sometimes has to be done, and there are things that can be cut that must be cut.
Good evening. Mark Weldon with WI Commercial Properties from Linden. So, I'm one of those developers that has brought 3,500 jobs to this state. Some of these companies have come from all over the world, and all parts of the United States. We represent 26 of them. They pay $1 million, $1 million in property tax. Now, every year, in August, right before the holiday, we get the school 2.5% increase. And then I get my assessed value increase, which is probably 15%. Year over year, I'm paying 17%. Now, in Utah, we have a state income tax. But in Florida, my property's in Florida, we have no state income tax. So, I'd like to... So I'd like to congratulate you all. Utah wins. You're already beating Florida property taxes. We can't talk about an increase, we have to talk about a decrease. We, we do not have a property tax problem. We have a spending problem. We, we, we have to have a referendum, we have to have a vote, we gotta get it on the ballot, and there'll be no property tax increase. If you wanna increase, you must increase the sales tax, or a user fee, or whatever, or a toll road, or find your revenue somewhere else. Okay? So, today, okay, I pay a million dollars in tax, I'm taking another minute. Unless anyone else is paying a million dollars. Is anyone else paying a million? But, but the point is, I have four new buildings coming in, so next year I'll be paying two million.
Sorry, you've, you've, you've taken your time. And this is just not fair to everyone else. You've taken your time, it's time, you gotta move on.
Let me finish.
That's great, I'm happy to do that. Thank you, yep.
So today, we met with a, a very big company in Chicago who already has five-hundred jobs here. They wanna bring another thousand. They love Linden. They love how Linden is run. They love the government, they love the people, the work ethic, they like Utah. But when I told them I had to go to a meeting tonight and talk about doubling the property tax, they said the crazy people in Chicago don't even do that. So what is going on here? I want you to not vote on this tonight. I want cooler heads to prevail, and I think you need to research it and put it off. Last meet, week, I met with Blackstone, one of the world's biggest real estate companies. When they heard about it, they said, this is bad. This is bad for the state. We like Utah. Utah's doing well because we're lower in cost, less crime, more productive people, better work ethic than California and other states. So people come here to live and work. We are not gonna continue to win in Utah with this type of tax policy. We just won't. You're gonna get a mass accidents, just like back in the day when Ross Perot said, hey, the giant sucking sound with NAFTA, well, that's what's gonna happen here in Utah. I guarantee it. You don't have the jobs, you're not gonna need the services, you're not gonna have great companies here.
Thank you.
My name's Nelson Allen Moke, and I'm not here speaking just for myself either. I've got sixteen children, eleven boys and five girls, and I have over a hundred and twenty-five grandchildren. Most of all of those people are residents of Utah County and taxpayers here, so I'm, I, I do have a, a following. Now, my boys own a chain of restaurants here in Utah County, and they pay quite a bit of taxes. I practiced law here for a, a little while, and I'm not worried about the hundred and whatever i- it is for the taxes. But anytime that lawmakers have the arrogance to double taxes in one year, especially when you have a growing, uh, tax base, you have all kinds of new people moving in, buying homes, building giant buildings all over the county here, and, and, gosh, it, it's just crazy. And, and, and fellas, uh, Mr. Lee, thank you so much. You're the only one that returned my phone call, and I called all three of you. And, uh, you know, to, to move in and kick this guy out of the, the driver's seat here as, as the commissioner, I think, uh, stacks more on that arrogance. You're welcome. Is my time up? Okay, thank you.
John Johannes Meyer from Pleasant Grove. Okay, so first, Mr. Ainge, I thought it's very inappropriate for you to attack, uh, Bill Lee in your comments, that's just so unprofessional. I expect more from a county commissioner than that, than attack somebody, that is very low. Uh, next thing, on public record, can I hear whether you will support the majority from each one of you? Mr. Lee, will you support the will of the majority as a rule of thumb? Try to. Mr. Ainge, are you willing to support the majority, the majority, those that are here? Or will you support the majority on public record right now? Yes or no?
This, this room does not represent a majority of Utah County voters.
They're here, come on. You even said you've had lots of calls from people that said that they're against the tax increase. How can you say that?
So I was elected to do a job and I-
Represent the majority, sir.
Yeah, but my job is to vote, th- this is an issue.
To represent the majority that elected you, sir. Yes or no? Will you go with the majority or not?
I will vote to do what I think is right.
Okay, that means no. Mr. Ivory, will you go with the majority, yes or no?
I believe in a republic form of government, and I am very threatened by rob, mob rule, because if we commit to always vote with the majority, the mob can overtake the rights of an individual. And as I very specifically mentioned in my comments, my job is to fund constitutional protections for the citizens of this county. Yeah, mob rule is dangerous.
Russell Smith, um, from Payson, I do know my name, thank you. Um, I would like to just ask a couple of questions. Commissioner Ivy, what is the increase of inflation since nineteen-eighty-six?
I don't have that number right in front of me.
Ask Google, it's one-point-eight-six percent. Commissioner Ainge, you said there's a decrease in tax by two-point-one-eight percent since nineteen-eighty-six, is that correct?
Seventy-two percent.
Seventy-two percent, divided by thirty-three is two-point-one-eight percent-
Per year.
-per year, yes. Okay, my property value in nineteen-ninety-nine was assessed at a certain amount where I paid one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars in tax. I just wrote a check for five-thousand-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifteen cents for tax. Divide that difference by twenty years, it's three-point-five percent. That is almost double the inflation rate. So you tell me how we are lowering the tax when our property values are going up, our taxes are going up, and the taxes are going up at almost double what inflation is going up at.
May I answer that?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you for giving me twenty seconds. So if you look at the Utah County portion of your tax, this has been a confusion that everyone has. It will not go up. The rate goes down as your assessment goes up, so you pay the same amount of dollars. Your total bill goes up, but the Utah County portion does not go up. I imp-
It goes up by a percentage, yes, that is correct. So my, three-and-a-half percent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ivy, I have to agree with you on one thing, fiscal responsibility. I'm retired on a fixed income, and I, looking around through this audience, I see a lot of faces just like mine. I'm getting to a point in paying taxes that I'm gonna have to become fiscally irresponsible because I can't afford you anymore.
Thank you.
I'll take your fifty-five seconds there, Mr. Berry.
I'm LeVar Oldham, you've already heard from my younger brother, I'd like to give you an older brother perspective. We created three businesses in this valley starting in nineteen-sixty-nine. At one time, one was a local company, one a national company, and one an international company, employing several hundreds of people. I was the primary salesman for all of those companies. Never once, this year's our fiftieth year of being in business as eight brothers, never once in fifty years did I ever go to a customer and say, I have to raise your rate because of growth in my company, which was extreme growth. We went from three brothers that started a company to an international company of hundreds of customers and millions of dollars a year in income. There has got to be a different way to fund what we're doing. I'm proud to say I hosted Commissioner Ivy in my home when he was trying to be elected. I appreciate your response in this taxing issue. But we've gotta go back to the drawing board so that you don't do this again and again and again. What we're doing is irresponsible. I haven't done it in fifty years, you don't need to do it now.
Can I just take a list, real, real quick, sir? Is, for those, is this li- line here people whose names have already been called?
Yes.
No, it's not. Okay, so let me replenish this really quick, calling up some names. Julie and Ben Paz, David Brock, Sharon Hyatt, Marilyn and Robert Harris, Eric Jorgensen, Justin Farnsworth, Wade Ashton, Rusty Cannon, Susan Wheatley.
Ralph Pinkham, and you did call my name, you can mark it off now. I want to give you a little adage. When I was a nine-year-old boy living in a small town in Vermont, a farmer came to the town hall meeting. They, they said, oh, we need to raise your taxes. This farmer quoted, "You can't get blood out of a turnip." Now, I'm a retired person like Mr. Barry, and I served my country honorably just like he did. Now, what am I supposed to do in the next couple of years when you want to raise my taxes and raise my taxes and raise my taxes on my property? Am I supposed to sell that house and move somewhere where they don't have property taxes? Yes or no? Tell me, do I have to leave? Do I have to move? I'll give you one, I'll give you one comment. Mr. Ainge and Mr. Ivy, you may become a one-term councilman. I'm gonna yield back thirteen seconds.
Thank you, sir.
Rob Slow to Orem. Originally, I came here to, well, I'm a real estate broker, and I thought you might need some help moving if you pass this thing tonight here, because you might not be safe or welcome, you know, and it's counting anymore here. I do appreciate being educated and what you guys have told us here, because I, it, you're telling us that you've got some problems here, and some of them may not be to your making here. You're inheriting some problems that you're trying to get resolved here. And I appreciate your, your, the dilemma that you're facing here. I do know, though, that I've, I've run other businesses before, and when you're jumping from seventy-something million to ninety-four million dollars in a year's time in the expenses, there's something wrong.
Absolutely.
And in the, uh, in the government, you know, when it's run things, people don't, will tell you, oh, we need this to be, we need this extra money to be efficient here. And half the time, they're probably lying to you because they just want the more money here. Okay, your jobs are to manage and to keep it down, to represent each of us here. As I looked around the room, most of the people here tonight are over fifty years old. Lot of them are gonna be retired, they're on fixed incomes, and I can tell you this, you know, with Utah State trying to raise our taxes tomorrow, uh, with any, real estate prices that have been going up here and the real estate profits going up, you know, there's just not any time that's, that's left for that here. I will say that you could be promoting the, there is a, on the records here, there's a, for sixty-six and older, thirty-three, less than thirty-two thousand dollars a year, there are some tax breaks where they can kinda get out of these things, those are the things you could be promoting here.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Ballard from Highland, Utah. Uh, your relative tax rate that you mentioned, that's ridiculous. My house may increase in value over time, but that's not money I can get out of my pocket and pay taxes with. Right? I can't get that money. Yes, and I'm not going to do a reverse mortgage. The county has been running for a hundred and sixty-nine years. They've done it without hundred percent tax increases. The average rate of a raise in the state of Utah is three percent. Personally, I haven't gotten that in my entire professional career. Mine's always been less than that, and now you're asking for a hundred percent raise. That just doesn't cut it. You need to cut your spending, you need to cut costs, you need to look at other sources of revenue, you need to not vote tonight on a budget, you need to think about everything that is coming before you, figure out how you can do this at two or three percent, which is what we get in our raise every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Brock from Lehigh. I'm a physician assistant, I work in surgery, and this last month I went on a trip to Gaza where we did humanitarian surgical work on children. Uh, while we were there at the hospital, we had a lot of supply issues. They don't have the same equipment, the same gear that we're accustomed to here in the U.S. Mood lighting. And so we had to do without, we had to be creative in what we use for a chest tube. I know it's hard to be a representative of the people, but you do represent us. Uh, it doesn't require you to be a financial genius. You may think that you are of higher intelligence at times because you're able to crunch numbers in a, in a math-magical way to promote your ideas, but in the end, all of these people here are seeing the, the same dollar amount increase. It's a, it's a real number to them, and it's not just a, a percent decrease, it's an actual amount of money that they're, they don't have to spend on their, their necessities or their wants. Uh, you can play the blame game all you want with, uh, departments wanting more, uh, but in the end, we hired you to find solutions, to be creative. Even if Bill, uh, Bill Lee's numbers don't necessarily make sense, he's at least thinking outside the box and trying to find solutions that, that can actually come up with this deficit expenditure. In short, we, we voted you to, to make the hard decisions, to look for those, those areas. And if your only solution is to write more checks with our money, then any one of us could have done that job.
My name's Wade Ashton of Provo. I want to talk about three points here in philosophy of taxes. Number one is that, uh, taxes in my mind should be at a percentage, and if the county is allocated a percentage, that should theoretically never change. It should stay as it is. As the property values go up, my taxes will naturally go up. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that most of the people here, and I'm getting close to retirement age, the highest cost, uh, consideration for a retired person is the taxes that are gonna be levied against them for the remainder of their retirement years. Those taxes, uh, being allocated at varying degrees where you're doubling them in one year makes it very difficult for these people who are retired to be able to allocate their funds for this. And I think back to my points, you know, when my parents were alive, taxes were a necessity, taxes were paid at the end of the year, but their costs in food and other, other associated things, uh, overshadowed the costs in their taxes. That's not the case anymore. Uh, the other thing I look at is that you mentioned earlier that you look through your department to find locations where you could cut taxes. Was that just you, or was there an outside independent that worked with you that was not in your back pocket that said, I can see where these programs or these administrative values or departments have no value? So that would be a direct question, and I guess to you, because I look at that. All right, well, thank you.
I have a stack of petitions from people who are opposed to this, and we don't know what to do with them. Where do they go?
We'll take them.
Thank you very much. My name is Sharon Hyatt, I'm a resident of Provo. I am the second mother of fifteen children who are all good citizens. Property taxes are, are very difficult for us, we live very modestly, but very happily. And we are very grateful for those of you who are willing to serve in public office and be in that fishbowl. Thank you for being willing to take everything that it takes. At the same time, we would like to have our needs considered. As a student at BYU, I remember hearing that, um, all the property owners here could well afford to take the brunt of- to take the brunt of the expense. I don't think that that's right. It's not right that 25% of the populace funds 75, the other 75%. We're being asked to fund for schools. We're going to need a lot of help with the traffic issues that are here, and a tax increase is just not right. And I think that if you would just consider those of us who are honestly trying to be good citizens and raise good families and make life meaningful, even the real estate is boxing us out now. The price of real estate here is just going out of sight. Please, stay.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm Rusty Cannon. I'm the vice president of the Utah Taxpayers Association. Commissioner Ivy, you were kind enough to read our statement. Thank you. I'll be brief. Just, we want to say how rare of an occasion this is. We are not on the Christmas card list of any county commissioner, any city council member, or any school board member across the state. We value this process. We are pioneers of the law that put it in place 33 years ago. The problem is that Utah County has never taken this step, except for once in 33 years. The problem has festered. So I will just summarize by reading just two quick snippets from the statement that we've made public a couple of weeks ago. After examining the budget proposal from the Utah County Commission for 2020 and studying the history of property tax rates and spending for the last several decades in the county, our association believes that an adjustment is needed in the certified rate and it's appropriate. That being said, we do not agree that 100% increase is needed. The Utah Taxpayers Association recognizes the need for an adjustment in property tax rates. We urge commissioners to trim budget requests and prioritize spending in order to make the proposed tax hike much lower than originally proposed. I will say, in the time that I have remaining, that each of you has been very respectful and kind in listening to our feedback. And I'd like everybody here to know that the process has been thoughtful, deep, and long, and you have not taken this lightly. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, real quick, is, do we have another line of people whose names have already been read? Okay, then I'll keep reading some more. Vicky Leroy, Vicky and Richard Leroy, Tom and Jeanette Wells, Guilford and Connie Rand, Carol Dumas, Diane Schmidt, John Payne, April Pimentel, Darrell Fordham, Dennis Miller, and Rick Mango.
Yes, my name is Rob Reynolds, of which you read. I like the analogy of digging the hole because I've made my livelihood as an excavation company, digging lots of holes and made money at it. I guess the philosophy behind that is you can make good decisions with whatever circumstance you're faced with. I represent different businesses, which I've chose to do a lot of work and other things in Utah County. I like Utah County. I'm a graduate from BYU, and so I have a lot of affinity, affinity, if you will, for this. The property tax, which I'm experiencing on the properties I own, probably this change is going to exceed probably $100,000 to me. Now, you may say that is spread out over whatever buildings, but every one of the tenants, every one of the businesses, every one of the things within those properties likewise is going to get a cost increase, which turns around when these, when everybody, citizen visits a dentist, they're going to have to pay more money to the dentist firm because they're likewise, their costs are higher. So it's not just the $84 or whatever it may be. It's expanded in all different aspects. We have several apartment, multifamily, a couple of them that are sizable. The cost rate for people to rent and exist in those complexes goes up due to tax raises and those kinds of items that makes us to where we have to raise it because we cannot compete or cannot absorb those costs. They have to be passed on. So likewise, I would urge and encourage each other processes by which to allocate, save money, and generate revenue elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Rich with, I'm in Linden. This is probably going to sound unpopular, obviously with this crowd tonight. I'm, popular thing is, in agreement with everyone else, I don't want to see my taxes double like anyone else. As we just heard the gentleman from the Utah Taxpayers Association mention, the problem has been festering for 23 years because the candidate's gotten kicked down the road again and again. I think starting with a no on everything is willfully ignorant, and that hurts everyone, and it's very difficult to work with people who are willfully ignorant, who start off saying, "No, no, no," before I'm willing to listen. At the same time, doubling the tax rate seems egregious, as we've heard over here. We saw the budget at 79 million, and then the next year, it jumps up to 94 million. That's a 20% increase year over year, one year. Bill, Representative Lee, Commissioner Lee asks great questions in terms of, do we really need not just to cut where we already have, but this increase, is it really necessary to have a 20% increase year over year? And so I think it's important for us to, everybody be willing to listen and to be willing to say, "Let's boil the egg slowly instead of dropping it into boiling water and watching it all crack open."
Thank you.
I'm Vicky Leroy. I live in Linden and a mother of three. Unfortunately, I lost one son. My husband and I are both veterans. We served our country. We've worked hard, and we paid our home off. We worked hard. We have a small home. I don't consider it big. But now, we're in the retirement age. I don't have an income yet. My husband does. We're living on his social security. But not only is it hard for us to be able to come up, because balancing a budget's really hard. It's very hard when you've got to see increases in your taxes, fuel, food, medical, you name it, and now property taxes. And I seen it as doubled. It just broke my heart. I don't want to buy Christmas presents because I can't afford them. It just brings me to tears. I'm sorry. I'm trying to think of ways I can cut back. I had a heart attack a year ago. My husband had a pacemaker put in. Our medical expenses are way high. Now, we have to pay more in the medical cost. We have to pay more for deductible. We've got to meet $2,000 before they even pay anything, and that's on a fixed income, social security. Now, this is my, my thought. Increase according to increase in social security. No more. They increase at 1.6, increase property taxes maybe 1.6.
Amen, sister. You go, girl. You go, girl.
I'm the better half, Richard. All I wanted to say is that we don't want to vote on this tonight. I would like you guys to put this on a ballot. You said that this wasn't the majority of Utah County, so let's put this shit on a ballot and let, let Utah County vote on this.
Thank you.
And because, for another, for another reason, I didn't know I moved to California. I do not care for these taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Dumas. I live in Pleasant Grove. You say it's only, what, $85? But it's not just Utah County taxes going up. They're up on the hill raising taxes on everything that they can raise taxes on. So there's not that, there's that. And then the cities are going to raise their taxes, and the school district raises theirs, and it just escalates. Now, let's talk about people who are on fixed income. Can you live on $1,250 a month? That's an average for social security because you get like 14 whatever, and then you have to pay $135 for Medicare premium, even though you paid for it all your working life, you still have to pay 135 premium. So basically, they're living on $1,250. Can you do that, Mr. Ainge?
Can you ask me a direct question?
Yes. Can you live on $1,250 bucks?
Yeah, with me and my five children, we, that would not, our, our family budget would not fit within that.
Well, even, even retired people can't live on $1,250 bucks. This does hurt them extensively.
Amen.
Okay? Think about it. Think about what you would, how you would feel if you had to live on $1,250 and people want to keep raising your rates.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. While he's fixing that mic, do we have hands for those who's, who are in line whose names have already been read? Just one? Okay? Oh, oh, okay, it's going all the way back. Okay, we're good.
Hey, I am Diane Schmidt from Lehigh, Utah.
Where'd they come from?
Yeah, they put us on the bottom.
Go ahead.
If I'm ahead of you, I am very sorry. I hope to speak for all of us. We, the people of the United States, we pay the bills. We are the loan that you're taking out. Only the difference is, is when you take out a loan from us, if we, if, if we don't pay, if it doesn't get paid, we, we're, we're stuck with it. And remember, government is like fire. It can be very destructive, and in our day and age, we especially now need to stand together and use the Constitution and use our rights in a way that will, that will help the people. You aren't going to be young forever, and this is going to go, and you will have, if this continues, you're going to be standing in an audience just like we are. And so, what I would say, most, that would work out very nicely, is if you would show the pub, I was out there with petitions. There was only three people that didn't sign it. We do represent the people in Utah County. Only one in 1,000 would come to this meeting. If you're lucky, you already know that. Only one in 500 will write a letter. So when you get a letter or you get somebody showing up on Christmas holiday season at 6 o'clock, believe me, it was a struggle for every person who came here. Please, vote against it. Show this people, show the county that our system can be trusted and that you're honest.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm April Pimentel from Springville, and I'm at the beginning of the journey that most of these people here are on. My husband and I bought our first house two years ago. We anticipate living in Utah County our entire lives. We love it here. And that being what it is, I really appreciate that you are trying to balance the budget. That is really important to me, especially being young and a new homeowner. I know the importance of that. A 100% tax increase seems unrealistic and unreasonable. You mentioned, I think it was you, Commissioner Ivy, mentioned that you're doing this to cover, I think you called them constitutionally promised services. Could you tell me specifically what those are?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. The vast majority of the money from this increase would go to the county attorney's office, who obviously is, you know, over our judicial system. There would be a balance of that met with our public defender's office, which you have a constitutional right to a public defender if you can't afford one. Some of this money would be going to our elections division because I believe, we all believe that, you know, safe and secure elections, especially in today's climate, are essential, and so we'll be working on securing safer elections. The vast bulk of this increase would go there as well as to our sheriff's department. We had, Nanette Ride was just in here trying to plead for help for the sheriff's department just yesterday in that. So, so those core services right there constitute the vast majority of where this money would go.
Thank you.
My name is John Payne. I'm a citizen of Provo. My objection to these tax increases are that those of us who live in Provo, own property in Provo, are being hit with two other bond issues which are totally property tax related. The one is the school board is increasing, I think it's $275 million bond for the increases of these, development of these schools. Also, the Provo City Fire Department, the police department, and the city offices are hitting us with another $60 million bond, $70 million bond. And then we're talking about this increase, which is all, all three of these are property tax related. I'm trying to find out why we can't spread these costs out, because when it comes right down to it, when you accept the property tax exempted properties, city, state, federal, institutional, BYU, churches, et cetera, you take that down, and there's only 25% of us or less who are actually writing out the property tax checks within Provo City. I think it's very similar in other parts of the county. But my objection is that we, who are property owners, are paying a very unfair share, in other words, for the other 75%. Why can't we find some other way to fund these increases that you're talking about so that just those who own property aren't paying for those who are demanding services, getting services?
Thank you. As the next one comes up, I'll call three more names. Mark Butler, Brad Mall, Andrew Jackson.
Hi, I'm Dennis Miller from Spanish Fork, Utah. I have just one, I've realized that the Utah County portion is a small portion of the property tax assessment. However, it seems like Utah County, the services you have to provide are shrinking because those areas are being taken over by the cities, and the cities are handling those things. So why these huge increases? I, the auditing and the assessment board, I think, are running wild. I have an 1,100 square foot house that went up $30,000 this year. That's more than I paid for the house to start with. What am I supposed to do about that? I, I can't get the money out of the house unless I sell it, then I don't, don't have it anymore. That's garbage. So, just, you see our frustration.
Thank you, Dennis.
My name is Lynn Dayton. I hope I can represent people who are here. I came here very angry about what has happened. As you can see by the audience, everybody's probably pretty angry. I would beg you, good gentlemen, and I appreciate Bill Lee, what he has done and what he's trying to do, I would beg you, all of you, to go back, look things over a little bit. Doubling your property tax in one fell swoop? Did you guys ever think you'd see anything like that? It's unbelievable. Doubling your proper tax. Somebody hasn't been making plans. Somebody's been asleep. I don't know what it is, but I beg you to go back to the books a little bit. You don't have to vote on this tonight. Go back to the books and figure out a way, we're probably going to have some increase. We, we usually do get something like that, but look at it and see if there isn't a little better way that you can kind of soften the blow to all of these good people out here. Thank you.
Tom Wells from Santaquin, Utah. When I received my infamous card, I thought it was a joke, but unfortunately, it wasn't. I came here mostly just to hear what others had to say and to physically be here as a, as a vote of, that something needs to change. We all know that prices go up, we get, most of us get a, a small inflationary increase in our, our wages. Some don't, some are on fixed incomes. The property tax is probably the most unjust of all the taxes that we have in our, our world. It's, it's unfairly distributed on income and age, and so I think where we do have a problem, we need to look at other solutions rather than raising property tax. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Andrew Jackson from Orem, and I was just going to say, Thomas Ellison is here, and I know he signed up at 5:00 to speak, so I don't know if the signatures got out of order. I just wanted to say thank you to the commission and staff for your hard work in doing, looking at this. I know you're taking the brunt of previous elected officials and other taxing entities, and I appreciate your work. I've gone to, I think, everybody's open houses and have I've gone to, I think, everybody's open houses and have watched the budget for, I don't know, 17, 18 years. I know you haven't created the issue, but I appreciate you addressing it. I just had a question, and I don't expect a response right now, but the ICE contract, I believe, is a federal contract, and all the federal contracts that I've worked with have all been reimbursable, so you have to have an expense, and then you can get reimbursed for it. I haven't had any that have been, in my experience, with federal contracts being a money-making, and I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm Mark Butler. I'm 80 years old. I retired 12 years ago, and I plotted my taxes. You can see it there. I purchased a home and moved back to Utah and purchased my home in 1976. My property taxes were less than $1,000, and the first 10 years, they stayed between $800 and $1,000. And then they started going up, and at a reasonable rate, I'd say if it kept going at this rate, it wouldn't be any problem. If then my taxes would have been here, at about $3,500. They're currently $7,000. And the reason why I went to the assessor's office, and they says, "Well, either sell your property or buy another acre." And I just quickly worked out, in 1976, I purchased a home and four acres for $75,000. Since 1976, I've paid a total of $95,000 in property tax. In the past 20 years...
What's your name? Have we called your name yet?
Well, I'll just make it quick. In the past 20 years, my property taxes, I've paid $71,000 in property tax. But there's something wrong when you pay more in property tax than what you paid for the place in the first place. And I also understand that the county's tax is only a small percentage of this tax. Most of this goes to the school district. I'm aware of that. I didn't quite up the county's part. I just plotted up what I've been paying, and it's just, it's out of hand. Went up $1,000 this year, 500 year before, 500 year before that, it just keeps going. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is actually Brad Wall. I live here in Provo. W-A-L-L. First, thank you for serving us. We may not agree with some of you or much of what you're suggesting, but you are public servants, so for that, I thank you. I'm looking at this beautiful building we're in. This is a lot nicer than the living room in my home. This woodwork is pricey. I kind of wonder how many county employees drive cars that are much nicer than most of us in this room can afford, every single day. I think there's places to cut. At what point do you raise taxes to where you're past 100%? That comes. You're 10%... Anyway, that's ridiculous. My last thought would be, if you decide to vote for this tonight, we vote you out next election.
My name's Daryl Fordham. I'm a Lehigh resident and a business owner in Orem. You know, as government officials, your responsibility is to do the people's business. And I don't feel like you're doing that. By even proposing to have a vote tonight, right on the heels of this public comment period, I feel like is extremely irresponsible, and is not the way that I think any of us would do the people's business. You know, I don't know how many people realize that the sales tax just increased in April, from 6.85% to 7.25%. You know, the legislature's meeting tomorrow night to ram another tax bill through that's going to increase our taxes. You guys are doing the same thing. You're not doing the people's business. You need to take some time, listen to the public, and find another way, you know? You've got to cut expenses, look at outsourcing, subcontracting some of these county services, put it out to a competitive bid. That's the way the rest of the world works. And, you know, there's got to be a better way.
Carl Rasmussen, Randy Hunuano, Alan Smith, Tom Sakovic, Victoria Trujillo, Bill Spence, Jerry Grover, Michael Loret, Thomas Ellison.
Hey, my name is Carl Rasmussen. I live in American Fork. I am sick of paying taxes. Every time I buy something, from a loaf of bread to my home, the car, my cellphone, I am paying taxes. It's gotten ridiculous. I pay several thousand dollars a year in taxes. Little personal note here, last year, I lost my job, took a $25,000 cut in pay. I had to look at my budget, see where I needed to cut back expenses. I found a way to, we're doing okay. I was able to cut some expenses, and we're doing okay. However, Mr. Ainge and Mr. Ivy, I want to thank you. You've given me a really good idea. I think I'll go to my manager tomorrow and ask him if he will double my pay, so I can work, solve some of the remaining budget issues I have. I don't think it's going to go over. You guys vote for this? I will not vote for you.
Tom Sakovic, Spanish Fork. The three of you have some really insightful perspectives, and I appreciate that. I think tonight is when you have to vote. Is that correct?
Maybe directed at one person.
Sorry, Commissioner Ainge.
Tonight, we had to hold this hearing. It was announced. And I actually do not know the question about the legal requirements of voting. I think in the past, it has been delayed. So I think that it would be legal to delay it. It cannot go on the ballot.
Okay, what I was going to say is that it may be, this is a painful process, and you've been kind of painted in a corner, because you're trying to find, how do we resolve the deficit that we have, in light of trying to take care of the sheriff's department, because their span of authority, they've got 2,100 square, eight miles, I think, in the county, of 600 which are city, and the rest of that, the sheriffs have to manage that, which is parks and mountain ranges, et cetera. They, and the attorney general's office are trying to encourage the slowing down, hammering individuals for first offenders in a lot of areas. But it would be best if maybe you had additional work sessions throughout the year, make them public, and talk, what are the other options that we could do? Not the ones that you're feeling like you're painted in the corner to do. That's just, I want to offer that as an idea.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Ellison. I just say that, where do we stop? I mean, the taxes keep rising. And at one point, what do we do? Move out on the street? And it doesn't go just here, but let it go for all the ones that are on the, on property tax. Let them know that we don't want it to more tax.
I'm Michael Loret. I live in Orem, and I work in Provo. And so I'm getting hit in both places. I got together with a bunch of people, and we went around and actually had 280 individuals sign a petition stating that we do not wish to see this 100% increase take place. It's not appropriate. It's not good government. And I'd like to leave, let's act that with you guys here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alan Smith from Orem. You know, property tax, they get you two ways already. They can either mess around with the factor, or they can mess around with the assessment. They can raise the assessment, change the factor. So there's two ways that it can already increase. And then now you're hitting us with a third way to increase it, which may not correlate perfectly. Right now, at 100%, my amount is $230. At 69%, it's $195 for the increase. You know, the thing that bugs me is that if we're on a fixed income, we are just nickel and dime to death. I mean, it's just incredible. All the time, it goes up, this goes up, that goes up, the other thing goes up. Now, I have a question. If we pay, or according to Commissioner Ainge's budget, and get the county back in the black, which I believe somehow should be done, when will a meeting like this happen again?
Is that a direct question?
Yeah, when will that happen again?
I would commit that I would never talk to the residents of Utah County for the remainder of my term of county commission about a property tax increase, and it should go beyond that. The Taxpayers Association recommends that you go through this process every five to eight years to recapture inflation. The reason it's so big is because the county didn't go through it. So we don't need to go through it for several years, and if we did, it would only be to increase the rate back to where it is now, because it'll keep going down. It automatically goes down.
They don't.
The mic's up, because your time's up. Below again on comments? Here, sorry, as you're coming up, I'll read some more. Barbara Metacass, Gerald Williams, Cheryl Finch, Brandon Jepson, Alan Hundley, Shane Morris, Vic Devano, John Renstrom, James Walter, and James from American Fork. Can't read the last name, sorry.
Hi, my name is Victoria Trujillo. I'm a Provo resident. First of all, I want to say, Commissioner Ainge, there are families that have five children that live on an income of $1,200 a month. Somebody suggested that you be more creative, and I read an article where the Provo airport was just given $404.3 million to work on the airport. Why don't we bring in big airlines to this airport? You can charge them landing fees, and then you'll make money. And all these residents that live in Utah County are driving all the way to Salt Lake to fly out, and we are paying landing fees to Salt Lake County. So I'm against rate... I don't even work in the state of Utah, but I pay taxes to the state of Utah. So I think that you need to be more creative. Bring in more businesses, charge them, not the people that live, not the residents. And you could also charge, the churches need to pay taxes on their property. Yeah, I think the churches need to...
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Barbara Metaxis.
Sorry, messing up your name.
That's all right. Most people do. My thought, when I first came to Utah, I went to work for BYU for the purchasing department of the church. And one of the things that I did was I went through and I made them far more efficient. I think since government's main challenge is it's a self-propagating creature, it just grows by nature, as do the services they provide. I think it's time to start looking at the services, start evaluating just how efficient they really are. I know there are departments that say, "Oh, we need this many more people to do our job." And in reality, they just need to do it better. They need a better way to do it. I would ask that you would consider that before adding a lot to our tax burden. Efficiency has got to be primary here, because otherwise, the government will just continue to grow and grow and grow into this huge monster that we have for federal government. So, thank you. I appreciate your consideration and the time that you take to help us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alan Hundley. I just bought a house in Utah County at the beginning of the year. I'm not particularly convinced of this entire thing's legitimacy. Perhaps I could declare the county of this room and ask everyone here to vote on where we ought to get the money, and I think you might find yourself understanding what theft feels like. I'm not interested in being stolen from. I'm certainly not interested in being stolen more, stolen from more, including whatever subsequent increases will be after this one. I hope your spending is unsustainable. I think this is a great opportunity for you to reconsider what's a necessary service and privatize those necessary services which you can't pay for. With time and luck, your positions may not exist at all. And you said the majority of the money is going to attorneys and the sheriff's department. If you have to have a lot more money, maybe you ought to stop throwing kids in jail for having dime sacks, maybe. That might help a little bit. The free market is a much better governor than you will ever be.
Jerry Williams, Provo, small business owner. I own a bunch of storage units here in Utah County, and most of the people we service are low-income individuals with small homes that don't have room to store additional things. So you're kind of hitting them twice, because when you hit me, I have to raise my rates, and then they, they're getting hit on their homes, too. And these are people who can barely afford to pay their monthly rent on a storage unit of $59 a month. I don't think that we're seeing the bigger picture here. To me, it's an operational issue. I run businesses, I understand operations. I thought tonight's event was poorly orchestrated operationally. I was over in the other building. There should have been a microphone over there. I don't know why there wasn't. Make everybody walk by. I don't know why we needed to hold it in this room. So that's an easy example of an operational misstep. I think there's many examples that we could point at, but it's why small businesses succeed and government continues to fail. And I think that we need to readdress this and take a little bit better of a look. Have we even considered bringing on a professional consultant to help us in this process? That's all I got.
Thank you.
I wrote some notes down to help a little bit. I don't have a cool name like Andrew Jackson. My name is John Renstrom. I came home in the third grade in tears, because I said to my parents, "It's bad enough. I have a last name that rhymes with restroom, but you named me John." So I have two rentals and a house, and my portion of taxes are going to be about $1,000. I'm not a big developer, but that still hits me in my pocket. That's going to hurt. I have an observation. Your slides, you kept showing tax revenues against spending, but you didn't really illustrate where the spending increases are coming from. And it's almost like you're saying, "Look, look, we need this money, we need this money," but you really aren't justifying to us why. And there were some huge increases in that tax. I mean, $10 million in one year, boom, you know? Tell us why. Tell us why. I think this point illustrates how you might be focusing on the wrong things, it's the spending. I really think it's the spending. We need to get our finger on that and understand it. I'm a landlord, every year, there's a suggestion. I get this stupid personal business property tax statement in the mail. It is like, I have 16 fridges and 16 stoves, they're worth like $100 each on eBay or whatever on KSL. But yet I have to fill out this form, I have to mail it back in, some lady has to open it up, read through the... If you want to cut business expenses or cut something right there, please, that would be one.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a cool name. My name's Victano Luigi Fidelli Giuseppe DeVano. But you can just call me Vic. And man, I'm glad I'm not in your position tonight, and any time, because it's very difficult. I do think there are other things that we should all consider that cause problems, and we need to go to additional meetings, like school assessments are way out of hand. I don't remember one thing about a school, how great it was or whatever. I do remember the great faculty members that impacted my life. And much of our taxes here, people, is school assessment, and we need to start, you know, calling government for that. Also, one of the things you're considering is you're talking about increasing county government to five or six or seven commissioners and a mayor. Just this factor of more money or whatever it is is one reason we don't even want to consider that. I would rather come and talk to you three than talking to four or five more people that may not have it in tune with the people. And I think when you talk about, there's a great quote, you know, that I like this time of year when Miracle on 39th Street, when the judge stands up at the very end and looks in God we trust. In the county commission, we trust. And he says, we trust in the people. And that's what we're here tonight to talk about. We have a lot of new homes that are being built. I've built 1,500 homes with my partners.
Thank you, Vic. Thank you.
My name is James Yule, American Fork. I'm not a mathematician, but I know mumbo jumbo and sleight of hand when I see it. You guys are making it sound like we're having a decrease in taxes. Let me tell you the truth. My taxes on my house that I bought in 2012 have gone up 538% this year. I paid 538% this year compared to what I paid in 2012. So don't tell me taxes are going down. I don't buy it. The other thing is, if you don't think this group represents Utah County, why don't you put it on a ballot and find out?
Sorry for the crazy suit. Brandon Jepson, I appreciate you guys are doing a really difficult thing here, and so thank you for the effort that you've put forth. And a lot of good questions raised. I agree that delaying the vote may be the wisest thing in order to better understand what the public thinks about this. No doubt you guys have taken a lot of time to consider the issue and to figure out where a lot of costs can be cut. The one thing that I'm wondering about, though, is for the long term, how do we prevent this kind of irresponsible spending from happening again? What can be put in place so that when you gentlemen are no longer in the positions that you're in, that someone else doesn't put us in the same situation in the future? I think that's the biggest problem to solve here. Thank you. Let me call, refresh this list. Julie Blaney, Claudia Stokes, Castro, sorry, from Payson. I guess anyone from Payson might fill that, I can't. William, Hansi, Wally Brown, Lamar Woods, Ernest Branwell, Doug Fox, Steve Maddox.
Hi, my name's Lexi Silcox. I am on that list somewhere, you'll find me, it's fine. I didn't know that this was obviously a big problem for a lot of years that you guys are up against, but 23 years, it's a long time, but 100% increase? You gotta, I mean, come on. You can't just put that to the people and expect that to be the case. I agree with Bill over here, this bald-headed beauty, you know, that it's just got to be something that you got to get creative with, you know? You've got to just use your brains, you know? You got to think about it. Think outside the box, not be just throwing this to the people like big government does, thinking that that's the mentality, that it's going to fix the problem, when that is the problem. You guys think more money is just going to fix it, and that's not the case. So, yeah, if it is set to a vote tonight and you guys end up voting for it, I can say I'm not voting for you. So, all right, thank you so much. Have a good night, you guys.
I'm Wally Brown. I live in Spanish Fork. Mr. Ivey mentions things like saving constitutional rights with this big tax hike. And the biggest constitutional right is the people's will. We the people. That comes first. I'll tell you another thing that comes first, or comes behind we the people. And that is government jobs, government salaries, government spending comes after we the people. And I can tell you one thing, I could go through your financials, and I'm not even a math whiz, I'm far from it. I can go through your financials and I can find a way to cut back without raising taxes, I know one good way. We sell the jail and everything, and the property there next to the airport in Spanish Fork, and put the prisoners in tents, just like Sheriff Arpaio did down in Arizona. You'll get a few, you'll get a few million. Sorry to you guys that have to sit outside, but, you know, I've been an infantryman in the 82nd Airborne, and I've drug my butt through the grass and mud, and so I don't feel sorry at all. So that's what I wanted to say. If we're going to talk about constitution, then let's do we the people.
I'm Julie Blaney from Payson, Utah. And I don't envy you the position that you're in right now, because no one wants a tax increase. But I have to admit, and I feel ashamed, I think we took our eye off the ball. When I got my notice for property taxes and I looked at the little pie chart, and I saw that we, as Utah County property owners, had paid $500 million in property taxes. We paid it. And of that $500 million, what, 72% went to the public schools that are failing us? So I'm telling you, I think we took our eye off the ball. And then you see that of that huge amount of money, only $33 million went to our county. And I think that almost seems reasonable compared to everything else. But I know that there are things that we need to start to look at as taxpayers. And it's, why are we paying $8 million to assessing and collecting property taxes, just Utah County? Now, I know that's the legislature that did that, but I'm asking you as residents, this is something we need to call our legislators to account for. This is wrong, we're overtaxed. Okay, and then I do not support the tax increase, and I want to ask you to ponder something, Mr. Ivey and Mr. Ainge.
Just let her ask the question.
Julie, ask your question.
Ruby Maury, my question is, you've both stated that you would not support selling the $10 million equestrian property that Mr. Lee wants to use that money. It would buy us four years, I believe, is that right, Bill? Three or four years, that quick?
Sorry, yes, that would go into the general, I mean, into the fund balance.
Okay, because I do not dispute that our attorney needs more attorneys and money. But could you, in your conscience, see a family, these people on fixed income lose their home because they can't afford their property taxes, but you won't sell a $10 million property? Honestly, I don't know how you could sleep... No, I'm asking you to ponder it, it's not a question. And then...
We have an answer.
I think that's all I had. I just think that it's wrong, it's the wrong time, we're overtaxed.
I'm Claudia Stokes from Orem. And I just want to say, we've heard a lot of retired people here tonight. I work a lot with the youth, but there's a giant billboard on I-15 that says, "One out of seven or eight kids does not know where their next meal's coming from." And you're taxing these people, these people who are raising young families, these people who are on fixed incomes. Now, you, your little bit, is all by itself. But as we've heard tonight, the whole gamut of the whole taxes is breaking our backs. You guys don't have it right. You don't have it right yet. Wait until it's right. Wait until it feels good to everybody and that it's something we can support and live with. That's just like what we teach our kids, you don't have it right yet. So don't vote on something that's wrong now. Don't put us in a bind that we can't. And another thing, where is the reversal? Okay, we raise our taxes now to get where we need to go, but when does it end? The thing is, when we get taxes, they don't have an end. You come back and it just keeps going until the next raise. So it should have an end out. If we do this, we'll be able to be here and then we'll take care of our other stuff. Reinvent the wheel here, seriously. So many businesses, brick and mortar businesses, are going out because they're not computerized, they're not internet savvy. The ones that are internet savvy, because they're going with the flow, are succeeding. We're not succeeding. Reinvent it, rethink it, make it work. Instead of what we've always done, turn it into something that maybe we haven't done that's better, that will work for us. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lamar Woods, I'm from Orem. I think we're talking to people that didn't create this problem. It was a thing of failure to plan on other people's part, did not create an emergency for us. I don't know if that's right or not. But when budgets are funded, often at the end of the year, people scramble to spend the money that they have in government. And they, I think that's a place you can look at. See if people are spending the bulk of their, or a lot of their excess funds at the end of the year, because when they spend it, then next year they get it again. So I'm not against tax increase, I just don't think 100% is what should be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Faux. I've been a business owner here in Utah County for over 25 years. I'm the CEO of this company. And if I saw a deficit of $12 million, I would have to make cuts. And I think that's the same as what we the people expect of you. Now, you say you've made close to $1 million of cuts, I know it's not enough. And the reason why, I have a friend who has a niece, recently told us, she works for the county, and her job is when people call, people call in and say, I have wild turkeys, what do I do? They're on my property. Or my horse hurt itself on a fence, what do I do? And she laughed and said, I just look it up on the internet, tell them what it says on the internet. She works for the county. You can do better on making cuts. I would not vote tonight, I would look for more cuts. If I was the CEO of this corporation, I'd go to every department, I'd say, you have to make this, this is how much you have to cut, and that's how it has to happen. You might be unpopular with the people you're over here in the county, but in the end, you'll get reelected by the people. And you work, this is who you really work for, not for the people of Utah County, not for the employees of Utah County.
Oh, no, sure, thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Tiffany, I'm from Spanish Fork. And I want to say also that I'm also on limited income, retired. And that, reiterate what everyone else has said, is that as these taxes go up, it's just more than we can handle. We're trying to figure out what we can do. We've already looked into selling our house and trying to downsize, but it's unreasonable. And I have a specific question. I want to know why, Mr. Ainge, why we cannot put this, why it cannot go on the ballot? Why can't this go on the ballot?
I don't know, I just know that it's the role of the county commissioners to pass this resolution every year, to pass the budget. I mean, that's the legislative role of the county commission, is to pass a final budget, which goes with the property tax rate. So that's our job, that's what we were elected to do. It's not, there are a lot, several things that can be put on the ballot, and that we've talked about here. General obligation bond for, you know, if we wanted to build a new building or increase taxes that way. But this general property tax rate is just a legislative action from this body.
Okay, and then I want to know if there's any way that you can postpone this and give it more thought, because it is a really hard hardship on so many...
I want to answer that question so badly, because so many of you have raised that, and I can't. That's one of the frustrations of this process. You've raised so many questions, so, but my time's up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Finlison, I'm from Mapleton. My husband and I just bought our first home this year, his second, my first. I wanted to address the three departments that have been earmarked for the largest portions of revenue to come from this tax hike. $3.5 million to the Utah County Sheriff's Office, $3 million to the Department of Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Treatment, and $2 million to the Utah County Attorney's Office. The Utah County Sheriff's Department, why are you looking for, to ask the citizens of Utah County to foot the bill for us to increase the resources of the force, and that's the key word, the force, that is used to police us, when across the country, citizens, police have been increasingly taking citizens' basic rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? In fact, just in Florida, this week, UPS driver was shot when the police in Florida shot over 200 rounds into a stolen UPS truck. They killed the thieves, killed the thieves which was in a GPS tracked truck. They also killed two hostages. In my personal opinion, I'd like to go a lot closer to the days of Barney Fife. The Department of Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Treatment, what's one of the biggest stressors in people's lives in which they turn to self-medicate with drugs and alcohol? Financial stress. The Utah County Attorney Office, maybe we wouldn't need as many public defenders if we could look more into decreasing minimum sentences for nonviolent offenders? Cicero, I'm going to end with, well...
Okay, I'm going to refresh this list. Gary Cooper, Elda Benson, James Benson, Sandra Van Bloom, Emily Jones, Joel Jones, Chris Rostrum, Terry German.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Ezel, I'm from Lehigh, Utah. We've lived here for a little while, but we have some roots in California. California did a lot of things wrong, but they did one thing right, and that was Proposition 13. So I'd like to address this crowd and say, as long as the state has the power to assess your home as more and more expensive, the problems never going to be solved. My aunt and uncle lived in a house they bought for $5,000. After 40 years of living there, it was worth over $1 million. They could not, they would have been forced out of that home had they been forced to pay what the value of the home would be assessed to be today. But they remained in that home because they, citizens got together, they passed an amendment to the California Constitution that said that the state could not raise more than the taxes on their home, or the evaluation of their home, more than 1% a year of the cost. 1% a year of the cost.
I'm only for now.
Yeah. So, as long as the state can, we've got the same problem they had in California. Prices are going up here faster than people can afford it. People are going to be running out of their homes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Jones, Provo, Utah. My wife and I live south of campus, and our rent's going up just because the landlord's taxes are going up. And honestly, I'm fine with that, because I see the bigger picture. I know a lot of people here on the older generation, which is cool, but I'm gonna have to eat the damages done for not taking care of the situation. I do think there's a better way to do it, by not increasing the tax bill. Maybe we can have police officers pull people over more, I don't know. I mean, I did the $2 million, it's extra like 50 tickets a day more. But anyways, point being, there's gotta be a better way. I think everyone's on the same page here. I said, but that's with everyone who's, you know, they sound like they're living budget, paycheck to paycheck. But, you know, a lot of my money goes to social security. I'm fine with paying that. I think everyone should be okay with paying taxes to a degree. I think we all are, just not 100%. Obviously, it sucks, but just millennial generation here, I'm fine with the bigger picture. I want all of you to eat and stay in your homes, but at the same time, I want to be able to have my kids to have a future and not be left with a massive deficit in the long run. So that's all.
Thank you.
My name is Ernest Bramwell from Pleasant Grove. I was employed as a professional engineer for 45 years. I lost my job a couple of times due to reduction of force, lack of work, whatever. At the end of 45 years, I retired without a rich retirement package. I note that government employees in Utah work 25 years and retire with a very significant portion of their salary as a retirement, and also have rich benefits. When I contrast that with my experience in the private sector, I think there's an inequity. In Utah County specifically, I purchased a home 30 years ago. That home, that home, the county assessor is increasing in value much faster than new homes coming on the market, and I am bearing a disproportionate portion of the cost of increase because I'm in an existing home. I see a lot of people here who I think are in the same boat, in an existing home, and the county assessor is increasing the valuation much faster than on new properties that come to market that are expensive. And I think that's an inequity.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's, my name's Brady Harper. I'm an Orem resident, have been most of my life. And I'm a business owner, and I know what it's like to have to balance budgets. And I also know and can appreciate where y'all are at, because you guys are the elected officials, and the rest of us are the ones that elected you, or didn't, whichever way it is. But I have a couple of quick things, and I only have, anyway, society in every state is a blessing, but government, even in its best state, is but a necessary evil. In its worst state, an intolerable one. For when we suffer or are exposed to by the same miseries by a government with which we might expect in a country without government, our calamity is heightened by reflecting that we furnish the means by which we suffer. Government, like dress, is the badge lost of lost innocence. The palaces of kings are built upon the ruins of the bower's paradise. I don't have time to finish that, but that's common sense, Thomas Paine, second paragraph of the introduction. I understand the need for taxes, and they should be something that is there, frugally there, but I also know what it's like to not have enough money at the end of the month. And like my budget, the county needs to have the same thing, and I know you've heard this 100 times, but you guys are the elected officials. Everybody else that's backing you guys up here are the bureaucratic officials that are lifers. They're here, they have salaries, they will be here when you're gone, and I didn't get to finish what I wanted, but...
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Jones. I live in Provo. I am here, I just want to clarify, it's my understanding that there is not 100% tax rate. What were you proposing, Mr. Ivy? 69...
The plan will roughly come in around 69, 70%.
69%, so that needs to be clarified. The, they're not proposing 100% tax rate. The majority of Utah is not represented here. The voters are not represented here. You need to remember who voted you in, and you need to vote for them. As a people, we, the people, need to remember, why are we giving tax breaks to the people in silicone slopes, all those businesses? Businesses that are coming in, getting millions of dollars in tax breaks, and we are paying for it. Why are businesses investing? Because we have the priceless resource of these good people. Businesses want to invest in our people, why are we paying for it? They should have to pay for us. I think there are more creative solutions here, and I think we can all do it together. We should not be butting heads and yelling at each other. We can make this work. I am in favor of holding the vote for a later time. I think there are more creative solutions. In addition to that, I think that also, for a creative solution, I propose that you charge the businesses for their tax breaks. They may not come here, but that's good for us. Our property taxes and evaluations won't go up. So I think we need to consider the long-term consequence of our actions, and I am in favor of balancing the budget, but I think it can be done creatively. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I'm Gavin Warner. I just recently bought me a house in Palmyra, Utah. I work hard for my money, and like everyone else probably does, taxes are a necessary evil, or a necessary evil, but property taxes are unethical. We need to look for income elsewhere when you're talking about raising our property taxes. We need to privatize contractors that help do services around the Sydney. Also, we've had laws that the people have passed, and I know it's not your fault, but like Prop 2, for instance, Colorado paid for all of their kids to have food, so let's get the ball rolling on something there. Maybe we can, like I say, look for income elsewhere, and let's withhold on this vote tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James Benson, Provo. I live in Provo. I'm fixed income, and we feel we are being buried by taxes. I worked for a company for 27 years, and I don't know where you get all of your information from your different departments and areas on what they need, but I didn't like it when they came, but we had outside efficiency experts come in that helped us make changes to what we're doing, how we're doing, and why we're doing it. We had, and I stress, private auditors come in, not internal auditors, that went through our systems, our budgets, and helped keep costs down. I know these guys over here, the police department, the county sheriff's department, they need, I know they need funds. I would say that you are our employees, as in, you are our employees, and I would expect you to do what you can do, what you need to do to lower taxes, or no tax increase for all the public of Utah County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, let me refresh this a little, a few more. Steve Taylor, William Tarbo, Nicolina Fibbs, John Dunn, Ruby Maury, Spence Hawkins, Gary Ratcliffe, Michael Enden, Lexie Silcox, and Brent Johnson.
My name is Elda Benson. I am a Provo resident, have lived here for probably 32 years. I have watched the facial expressions. I know, Mr. Ivy, you're extremely bored. I know, Mr. Ainge, you're extremely arrogant, and I appreciate Mr. Commissioner Lee for your integrity. Your body language speaks volumes, and I don't appreciate what I've seen here, but I do appreciate Congress, or Commissioner Lee, and I appreciate that you are cognizant of the will of the people. If you notice, the majority of the will of the people are against a tax increase. We are tax fatigued. We are bond fatigued. So if you want to add another tax on top of all the other taxes that we're paying, I will be a proponent that you too, especially you, Mr. Ainge, because you came in with a pretty good salary increase when you sat in that chair. And you can look so smugly at the elderly people that have paid taxes for years and years, and you can be smug in their responses to you because they're not so articulate. I'm very offended by that. I think you owe them an apology, because they do not, maybe they're not as articulate as you think you are. I don't like your smugness. And you owe, these people that voted you in place can easily vote you out of office. And I intend to be one of those.
Thank you. Thank you.
If it pleases the crown, I would like to share a few prepared thoughts. My name is Chris Rostrum. I, unlike many here tonight, am not a baby boomer. I'm a millennial, and I'm a homeowner, and I am not a socialist. I agree with the general sentiment here tonight, that which is to not raise taxes. I also agree with the commission that the can has been kicked down the road for far too long. I do not, however, agree with many of the arguments for, even for the againsts that have been presented. For one, the government is not a business, and it's not comparable to any of these good business owners here who have tried to compare it. There is no creative way for the government to go back to the drawing board and figure out new numbers. The numbers are the numbers. The only solution, as spoken of by Thomas Jefferson, who I would hold in higher regard than anyone in this room, is to abolish government, and that's the only fiscally responsible All of you who are business owners here, are you really so incompetent that you need to be micromanaged by not one, two, or three, but four levels of government? If we're going to hold a vote on anything, it shouldn't be what the acceptable amount of legal theft is, but it should be on which portions of government we are going to start with when we're abolishing government. The county seems like perhaps the least important level of government to me. Thank you so much. Jeffrey Epstein did not kill himself.
Hi, I'm Steve Taylor. I'm from Saratoga Springs. I've lived here for about two years, but I was raised in Utah, so I finally moved back. I've been responsible, I've been the CFO for multi-hospital systems, where we were up against a similar situation where you are, where you had a fixed amount of revenue and unlimited amount of expenses. You have your department head submitting ideas for expenditures, either for capital or for more employees, but only, again, limited amount of revenues. We, we had, we faced the same situation. We were, certain, certain funding of ours came from the government, others came from private hospital, or insurance companies, et cetera. But we, we came to the point where we had to, as managers, go back to each of the individual managers in each of the hospitals and say, "This is your budget. This is what you have to live within. You have to make the requisite cuts to get down to the level of revenue that we're expecting for the following year." We didn't have a choice. We had to do it. As your managers, your department directors need to do the same thing as you need to do to manage them. It's not a matter of increasing revenues. The point about getting from 72 million to a $79 million expense with a $72 million income, and then the following year, increasing that difference, is an unfortunate sadness, but you have to have your managers reduce their costs to get down to the revenue that you...
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna keep reading. This is the last sheet. Martin May, Brandy Drury, Val Gibson, Sandra Gibson, Candy Salisbury, Christine Peterson? Sorry, it's from Springville, if I totally messed that up. John Peterson, Rebecca Crawford, Ashley Mortensen, Marilyn Tiffany.
I came at 5:00, was on the first sheet. I was the fifth name, and you have not called me.
You go, girl. You go, girl.
She can come now.
I have, I have actually heard that a couple of times, yeah. And I don't know where, we might have lost some sheets, so please come on up. Sorry about that.
So I have three minutes? Oh, okay. Deborah Herbert, Mapleton, Utah. The truth in taxation law in the state of Utah protects, is protected by the state constitution and robs me of the right for a recall nullification referendum vote. It states that my total property tax amount may never decrease, but can only increase. 13 years ago, my husband and I built ourselves with our forehands a $190,000 home, which the tax assessor now says is worth $438,000, so that they can say that it's a taxable amount of $214,000. I have an unfinished basement, my driveway needs to be replaced, and my back deck is rotting off the house. Utah has in the past and continues to offer tax shelters in the tens of millions of dollars for businesses developing along the I-15 corridor, slippery silicone slopes. You say it's because it provides jobs, but those provide, those jobs do not pay its employees enough money for them to provide a home or taxes in this exponentially high market. Property tax bills under the current tax structure are divided among several entities. In my tax area 140, Utah County, 70% of my property tax is, goes to the Nebo School District. How about restructuring the percentages among the entities that are billing me for new taxes? As far as the whole county government goes, I'm not in favor of supporting a judicial system where judges find criminals candy bars when they break their... No police force has ever recovered one piece of property from my burglar line phone before my husband called.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Teri German. Like so many here, when I opened my mail and saw that the tax increase was going to be double, it was a shock, and I felt like, well, the property taxes went up so much. If you're getting double what was on there, then that should be enough, until I listened to the explanation of how it's structured, and how the percentages go, and how that all works, and realizing that you guys just get a sliver of what the property taxes are. So I'm sorry that you're having to listen to all of us complain about how high our property taxes are, which they are, but it's not your fault, but it's the only platform we have right now, and so I think people are venting. I do really appreciate each one of your perspectives on how you're approaching it. I, I know that in Utah, we feel like we should have a balanced budget, and in Utah County, we've always been very conservative, and I feel like it's always been balanced, and I wish you could talk to the nation's government about that and have them balance theirs, and we'd be in a lot better position.
Amen.
So I'm not opposed to some tax increase. I don't even know that I'm opposed to the size you have in mind, knowing that some of it's going to go into reserve, but I think it would feel better to everyone if we did it incrementally. I know it's a big effort, because then you have to do it time after time, but it seems like it would be accepted better, but I do really appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is William Tarbox. I'm from Payson. I wanted to mention to Commissioner Ivy that at one time I have taken a similar oath to what you mentioned. I worked in law enforcement for Utah for a short period of time, and having taken that oath and given certain powers, it was very much so my understanding that because I had those powers, did not mean I had to use them. You have the power to raise taxes. You don't have to do it. As my job was, and as yours is, the people are who you represent. They are who you are working for. They are the ones that at the end of the day are going to be grateful... They are the ones that, at the end of the day, are going to be grateful or angry for the way that you have portrayed yourselves. Every person in this room, including you three up there, have a budget at home. You have X amount of dollars. You do not go over that money, because, like us, you cannot walk into a room and say, "I need more," and they'll just give it to you. It doesn't work that way. As government, I hope you can learn to understand that and to act on it. And I'd like to personally thank Commissioner Lee for his role.
Thank you.
I'm an average person representing average people. The percentages are just too high, too soon, too often. My property taxes from 2018 to 2019 increased 20%, and then we're faced with this increase in one year. That was a $500 increase to me. 20% in, I've worked, in the past 20 years, I've had about a 15% increase in my wages in 20 years, so one year's increase. I know, and again, I know, and it's repetitive, in saying, this is a small portion of the property tax, but if each one increases their percentages, it's a great amount of money. Your budgeting increased over 6% from 2018 to 2019 in rough figures, and increases over 16% from 19 to 20. Again, it's just high percentages in a short amount of time. $86.
My name is Brian Ferris. I live in Pleasant Grove, and I own commercial property also in Vineyard. And I'm maybe different than most in here. I don't live on a fixed income. But this property tax increase is an increase that could fund another employee. I am growing. I am adding jobs. I am adding opportunities for people to come here to Utah County. I want them here. I want the kids who grow up here to be able to stay here. This property tax increase funds that employee who won't be able to be at my business anymore. It's maybe some unpopular opinion and stuff, but I don't believe we have a problem. Maybe I'm an optimist. Maybe I'm too naive. But I believe in the past, Utah County Commissions have been fiscally responsible. I believe they've done the right thing. I believe they've cut where they needed to cut. I believe they've found solutions in the pioneer spirit of finding solutions. I believe, you may not feel like it's an easy job, but I think the easy job right now is to raise taxes and just get in more money. The hard job is to take in those and figure out where we can cut, where we can do, and be responsible. Those are the hard jobs. I don't envy you what you have, but I hope you'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Gibson. I'm actually a landlady, and it's not $85. It's over $10,000 in taxes, and that's not including our house. And it is a hardship. It's a true hardship to have taxes upon taxes. When I first became a landlord, I thought, "I'm going to be so charitable. I'm going to help people out, and help couples out, and families out, and give them a good, you know, apartment, a two-bedroom apartment for $525." Of course, taxes have made that an impossibility, and now I'm looking at probably having to raise all my apartments to $750, which is nothing compared to what people are paying. But you're not getting it right. The quality of life for kids has gone down so poorly. Most of them have a little cement pad off of a four-story complex to play on, or maybe a little yard cut off to the side with a little swing and, you know, a couple of slides. It's really sad, and the high taxes are killing everybody. And it isn't doing anything for the morale of the Valley, and I'm just hoping that you will, like, put a stop on this, hold this off, find a better way. This is hard on people.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Val Gibson. I live in Payson. I came to this meeting and learned a lot. Mr. Ivy told me that I had some mandated rights the government gave me, and I thank you for that. I'm just trying to figure out how they apply to me. I'll give you an example. A few weeks ago, we had to go to court. We got, which was a lengthy process, got an order from the court that the Sheriff's Department was to do some things for us. The clerk at the sheriff's office refused to accept that. It took about 12 days to get, we had to get an attorney involved to get the clerk to realize that she had to exercise that. And it cost me about $500 a day during that process. I feel like I've already paid my tax increase, to be honest with you. But I'm also really thankful that after that happened, the people in uniform really did a great job in exercising what they were supposed to do. You know, there is a lot of waste. That's one example in government. I was trying to build a house in Utah County until you realize it takes a year and a half to get an approval. That's pretty shameful. I'm just glad that I'm not as smart as Mr. Ivy to realize that those mandated rights do apply to me. I can't figure out how, but I'm glad he can.
My name is Bryce Mortimer. I'm the owner of Cedar Fort Publishing in Springville. I have a building there that I own, and I pay $42,000 in taxes every year. You look at that, and sometimes you think, well, you have a building that's worth a lot of money. But my business that operates inside of that building at times struggles, and I have to borrow against the building, which means that I have interest in loans that I'm already trying to pay on keeping this building operating. And so I understand the difficulty of trying to make ends meet, trying to make a budget meet. The tireless, sleepless nights that I've had many times in running a business is real, it's tangible, and it truly affects how you operate. And when taxes become so hard on the individual, then you think, "What am I doing it for? What's the point of doing this? What's the point of employing 60 people so that they can pay property taxes on all of their homes?" It becomes very difficult, because as a business owner, sometimes you're the bad guy in a room when it comes to government, and oftentimes, you're the last to get a raise and the first to get a pay cut. I heard a few times today that we talked about how this tax hasn't increased for 20 years, and so it's time that we need to increase a tax. And I don't know if that's true. The only thing that would be stopping you from taking all my money would be time, if taxes constantly go up. And so that can't be the case. I think we need to restructure how the percentages are taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Krenow Provo. I'm a logical person, and this question is directed directly at you, Mr. Ainge. One of the things that seemed to be absent from your documentation was the operational expenses. So my question is, is can you just tell me, or tell this audience, what the two top expenses that you have right now?
Two top increases?
Yes, from the department budgets.
From each department by department. So interestingly, the biggest increase in any department is the county attorney's office, which I could actually make the case for why, but I actually voted against that increase, because we were in deficit and we didn't have the money. But they were already hired at the end of this year, so those attorneys are rolling forward in next year. That's the biggest single increase. There's also public defenders that is a significant increase, and then the auditor's department. Some people made clear comments about, you know, digging into the numbers. I come from a business background. I love to do that. I love to go in line by line, and we've done a lot of that. But we operate on an accounting system that was custom-built in 1997, and we don't have one CPA engaged in the county, and I personally had to go through a lot of this information with some incredibly dedicated staff that we have, but we don't have enough. And so that is beefing up the auditor's department, so we can make sure that we find more savings and that taxpayer dollars aren't being spent in any fraudulent ways.
Very good.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask a question before you start. My time. How many people, how many hours have we been here? We estimated two hours, with each person getting a minute and 30 seconds. How long?
It's been just over, well, we've been here for three hours, but it's been, the public comment has just been just over two.
Okay.
Or two and 15.
So that was a pretty good estimate. Okay. My first point, as I've listened and taken lots of notes, and I learned a lot last year. I think it was Commissioner Gardner and Commissioner Ivy who brought up that we're supposed to, as a county, get money back from the state. I think the state had a $1.3 billion surplus last year. You, Mr. Lee, told us that we had some money in reserves. Okay? There are a lot of questions we need answered. How did we go from money in reserves to deficit this last year that you showed us? And are we getting our money back from the state?
So in answer to that question, we've advocated for some, in particular, in the public defenders area, we've been able to get some money in grant funding back from the state.
Why? We all need to find out. Why is the state stealing money from the county? Okay? That's number one job for you guys.
A clarification on that. A lot of that is the state passes a program and then tells us we get to pay for it, is how that generally happens.
So we need to get more involved in our legislature, don't we? Working with you guys, okay? So that was the first one. The second one is, Josh, you brought up that there's so much property value coming into Utah County, okay? Which means you're collecting more taxes off of them. Unless they're getting, as we hear from a lot of people, they're getting a lot of property breaks, tax breaks, just like Orem City gave 50 million to University Place, okay? So we need to find out why those taxes are not being collected. That was number one, okay?
Sorry, can I get your name?
Number two is, we talked about assessing our homes, property values, and it's, a lady read this taxation that you talked about, Josh, truth in taxation. The law says that our property taxes, our values will always go up, never back down. I don't understand that, okay? And then how can we make sure that the assessment, how do we, the public, verify the auditor's office that assesses the value of our property? How are they doing that? And some of the property owners and business owners, how do we know that your jobs are being done? What can we do? If you can write us, because I emailed all three of you, and I thank you for your responses. But we need to know, how do we watchdog your employees here that are assessing our property values? A lot of people, especially like ourselves on fixed incomes, cannot afford that increase when we get $15 extra this year on my social security disability. We need to find out these answers. Where do we go for these answers? Could you email us back? And then if everybody would email these commissioners for those answers, because you're not going to get them tonight. So email you guys back, right? And you will respond to us. How do we follow through on these questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashley Mortensen. I'm from Springville. First part I want to talk about is just to kind of address the senior citizens real quick. I grew up with my grandparents in the same household for over 30 years, so I understand the financial strain. My last grandparent just passed away after hitting 100 years old this year, so. And I also understand the financial strain, because I just put myself through nursing school with a job that paid under $10 an hour, so. What I want to make sure you know is that there already is a program for tax relief for senior citizens. So someone mentioned already, trying to get by on a social security check, they would qualify under that $1,400 a month, so make sure you look into that, okay? At the same time, I recognize that we've got to balance the budget, and I can't imagine for 30 years being able to pay like $100 or $120 a year and get the same service for 30 years. Like, the fact that it has not gone up is just, it mind-boggles me. So I understand the need for the increase, and it's not 100%. It's not doubling, right? Need to make sure we understand that. It is a significant increase, but selling the Equestrian Park is not the way to do it. I want better communication from Billy specifically, because unless I was watching your meeting a month ago, the horse community would never have known about.
I signed the list, but I didn't get called. My name is Laurel Udall from Lyndon, Utah. I have a master's degree in business association. I have an MBA, and so does my husband. We've lived in Lyndon, Utah for 20 years. It doesn't take a master's degree to figure out that Utah County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. We have added 26% increase of population in the last decade. It was just documented in the, not Desert News, the other paper, the Salley Tribune, which means we have had exponential growth, which means we should have exponential tax revenue without having to increase our taxes. So obviously, there's major mismanagement here, and furthermore, we have over 281 Utah County tax employees that make over $100,000. Then our commissioners make $168,000. What happened? To where the free market made more money than the government people, but now it's reversed. The government people are making more money than the private industry. It doesn't take a master's degree to figure out that we should have an exponential growth of income in tax revenue, because we've had an exponential growth of population in Saratoga, Eagle Mountain, Lehigh, so many places. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
My name is Ruby Mori, and I am from Spanish Fork. I wanted to maybe end this meeting by telling a story. When King Solomon sort of retired, he had a son named Rehoboam. And Rehoboam went to the young men and asked them, "Should I raise taxes?" And he was told by the young men, "Yes, raise taxes." He was told, he went to the old men, and he asked them, "Should I raise taxes?" And the old men said, "No, if you don't raise taxes, these people will love you forever." Well, Rehoboam, being a person who considered both situations, decided that he would follow the young men, and he raised the taxes. Now, what was the result of that? There were 12... There were 12 tribes in Israel. 10 of them found a new place.
I didn't get a chance to fill out one of those other things, but I've been sitting down here forever listening to anybody, everybody. So I'm going to be really quick, though. My dad was a city manager in Merced, California, where I grew up. Spent a lot of years there. Dad was probably one of the most conservative city managers you could find around. I mean, he, he watched every nickel and dime as if it was, you know, it was in his own money. He was what you call a conservative conservative on a budgetary basis. They came along, there's some fights in the city about what they were going to do with certain, with different factions of the city wanting money for certain things. So, but he knew everybody needed a new sewer system. He knew that that would be go straight across the board so everybody could have that. And he'd been so conservative with the monies for the city that he was able, he'd saved up so much money that he was able, they were able to have a brand-new sewer system for the entire city without raising taxes up one freaking dollar. That's the kind of, that's the kind of commissioners I want you guys to be. You know, maybe already, I want you to be that way and think in terms of being a conservative conservative and see what can be done on a creative basis. Take a deeper look into this thing. Let's try to make a best deal for everybody.
Okay, do we have anyone whose name, who they believe their name is on this list, who hasn't been called, who would like to speak? Your name's on this list?
No.
Okay. I, if you'd, commissioners?
I'm fine.
I think there's no others who are saying that there's one on the list, so I think we can know that it's coming to a close. And so for this one, we can make the exception.
I'm happy to let him speak.
Mark Barlow of American Fork. I've lived here about 35 years. I was here when the Utah lake was flooding. It was flooding because the dam out there in the Jordan Arrows, the gates were stuck. So they had a tax increase. I voted for it. I figured, good cause, fix the gates so we don't get flooded. I almost got flooded, by the way. At any rate, after that, what happened? Did we ever get a refund? Did somebody say the gates were fixed so we can cut the tax rate back? No, never happened. Somehow that money just kept getting taxed year after year and absorbed into the system. And so as a result, my policy is never vote for a tax increase, no matter how noble the cause is. My policy is tighten the belt and squeeze out all that money you absorbed earlier that you should have refunded to us and decreased the tax rate. And so that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Okay, so we budgeted some time for each of us to make concluding remarks. I don't have any preference for order. Should we follow the same order as before, perhaps? Okay.
First and foremost, thank you all for coming. I appreciate your comments. The first thing that I want to emphasize was, I believe it was Ashley's comment. And we've done some research on this. If you owned your home in this county in 1998 and you were paying $96 in taxes, guess what you pay today to the county?
More.
Nope. You pay $96. That's the way property tax law works in Utah. Our wonderful Clerk Auditor's Office has done that research and they've polled those numbers. It's within a few dollars. Okay? So I need you to ask yourself, can you buy the same thing today for $98 that you were buying in the late 90s? Okay? And so that, that's the reality that we're faced with, with how this process works.
I have to move on.
And so I just want to make sure that people understand that. And second, as we move on, I, I appreciate a lot of the comments about privatization. If you follow me on social media, I just put out a feeler for privatizing our animal shelters to see if there's an appetite for that. And we're doing data analysis to see if that works. We're looking at leasing our fleet. So we are going through that process very diligently. As we get into the details of this, I hear a lot of people saying, "Cut, cut, cut." There's something interesting in these two pieces of paper I have. They're two budget proposals that we've worked on as a group through a bunch of publicly noticed work sessions. And if you look at the expenditures in these, they're almost identical. The only real difference is how we're proposing to pay for them. And so what you find up here is a very strong consensus about the needs that this county is facing. There's just simply a difference in how we pay for them. And I would note, Julie, I appreciate your comment. All three of us voted to put the horse property up for sale and to explore that. So all three of us are very willing to explore that option. And when the time came to vote, we were in unanimity about selling that. So in answer to your question, yes, we have pondered that and we voted to do that because we're looking at all of those options. And so I just, I want you to know that this has been a deliberate process on our part. We've spent lots and lots of hours in public work sessions. A lot of those have been broadcast over YouTube, hours and hours of them. And so we have gone through a very deliberate process. And not just, it's been intensified the last two months, but it has been year-long because we knew this was coming. We knew we were continuing in a deficit spending cycle. And so I greatly appreciate your concerns about us taking time. And I want to iterate to you that we have invested that time, that we've had those public work sessions, that we've had those meetings with the department heads, that our Clerk Auditor's Office have done immense amounts of data research to help us understand this. And, and I think you've brought some, some very valid points. There was one gentleman who mentioned a user tax. I love that concept. Unfortunately, as your county commissioner, I can't implement that. It has to come from the state legislature. Because the state legislature's given me a couple avenues where I can fund county government. And that's sales tax and your property tax primarily. And I can't control the sales tax rate. If I had a choice, I would much rather address the sales tax rate than your property tax rate. Because on a pure principle basis, I agree with you that property tax is an immoral tax. But that's the avenues we have to currently work with. And that's why we work with your state legislatures very diligently to try and get laws like this changed and altered so that we have more flexibility as a local government, so that we can do those things that are more creative. But in some instances, our hands become tied because of the way the law is. And what the law gives us is the capacity currently to act within this property tax area. And if, when we go through this plan and a proposal, if we raise taxes this evening, it's only affecting our budget. We're actually going to have about a 6% bump. And so it, it is complicated, right? There is multiple facets to this. And that's why I'm so grateful for the Clerk Auditor's team. And these are incredibly, Amelia Powers and Josh are some of the most conservative-minded people I have ever met and worked with in my life. And they stood in a public meeting and said, "Yes, we concur that there needs to be a property tax increase." Every single other elected official that heads a department in this county stood in those meetings, from our county attorney down to our assessor and our county surveyor, and said, "This is what we need." Those are your Republican elected officials.
Well, I just want to thank all of you for, for being here. I, I really appreciate it and I appreciate your comments. The format of this meeting has been one of the harder things for me to endure. Because it doesn't, I don't mind people making tough comments. I'm happy. But over the last few weeks, I've been able to hold a lot of town halls. And one of the most enjoyable things has been to really bridge the gaps of understanding and the gaps of opinion at the start of those town hall meetings and realize that, you know, maybe we both learned something. And I'm not saying that everyone agreed walking out of those town halls, but they might have understood something different about how our budget works and how property tax works. One that I keep hearing negative reactions when Commissioner Ivey made the point and throughout the meeting is, I, I would ask that if you're interested in this, go look at your Utah County portion. Because I know, as a homeowner, we, we all feel like, we feel the burden. And not just a homeowner, but as a wage earner, we're getting taxed every which way. But we only can control this tax, right? And so when you do isolate this tax, if you're willing to do that work, you will see the rate does go down year over year over year. And so that's how the truth and taxation law works. And I just ask you to look at that. And you find something different, then come talk to us. But we, the other frustrating thing about this, I just want you guys all to know, is we have tried to reach out to so many people, but the tax notice goes out to every home. And I don't know exactly what that cost, Josh, but we had to send a mailer out, right? And so then, but we weren't allowed to provide any explanation to, on that sheet. So then we had to reach out. And now we had to reach out through email lists, phone calls, posting it on social media. But we could never reach that universe of people that all of you represent, who received the notice. And so I've wanted to have this dialogue so that we can explain some of the thought process. And now, this is going to sound crazy, but I just continually constrained by this meeting. I'm just going to rapid-fire some of these things. One thing that was brought up, I just want to make the point. Utah County, even after this increase that we're talking about, would be lower than all of our peer counties. Lower than Salt Lake County, lower than Davis County, lower than Weber County. And I'm not saying that that's a justification to increase the tax, but I think that's a helpful benchmark, especially when we start talking about there's going to be a sucking sound of people living, leaving Utah County. We would still be very competitive from anywhere else. And our state is competitive on a tax rate basis. The other thing is, have to cut. I can pledge to all of you, after this increase, if, if this goes through, then, and we're, then we have adjusted for inflation, right? The Taxpayer Association said, "Our rate has gone down 73%." So if we really had to force ourselves within a budget, we would cut. I don't have any problem making tough decisions cutting. If you can't tell from this meeting, I don't really care about whether I get re-elected. I don't really care about being well-liked in the community. I wouldn't go through this process if, if I did. Okay? But the question is, do we have to cut? We're in the fastest-growing county in the state. We have a really bright future. And we have an obligation to serve. I have department heads, a county attorney. It was mentioned I didn't vote for his increases. But the other day, he was telling me, and I think he was absolutely genuine. Said, "I was elected to do this job. I could have been doing a lot of other things. I did this because I wanted to serve our community. And I have victims of crime that are going unserved that I need to reach out to." And then he shows data that shows he has fewer resources, and so many departments do that, fewer resources per capita than any other department in the state. So the question becomes, do we have the right budget? If we had to cut, we can. But our budget has been declining. And so when I have all the county attorneys saying, "Oh, no, no, you don't have, you're not forced to live within this budget. You can increase the budget." That's true. And we can still do it and have a low and competitive rate. So we're willing to make tough decisions, but that, that's another one of the tough decisions, is what is the right level of service that our county needs now and our county's going to need long-term in the future? Let's see, what else can I get to in 30 seconds? The process, I, there are so many good suggestions here of what we can do. But one of the tough things is that we do have to pass a budget by the end of the year. And I get frustrated because I spent all year long working on this budget, working with our staff. And sometimes people bring solutions that are not fully vetted, which might be great next year, but let's start kicking those off in January, March so they're fully vetted by the time we pass a budget. Right now, we can't pass a budget with an idea that might come to fruition. We need real dollars to pay real people and real equipment.
Well, thank you for being here tonight. It's always an interesting process to go through and it is, it is uncomfortable. And I'll agree that, you know, this is a hearing, where we hear, a hearing, so it becomes problematic. Some of the things that I, that I heard and that we don't necessarily talk about, but it was brought up, when we talk about businesses and personal property tax. I mean, the property tax that you pay on your own property tax is one thing, but the businesses also have to pay on their, on their personal property tax. And so they're, that's going to have, that's going to trickle down, right? They're going to have to raise their rates too. So there's double hits that go on there. I, I, I heard that loud and clear. We also talked about, you know, truth and taxation and adjustments. Somebody was talking about the mother of ingenuity is the lack of, the lack of money. I mean, you actually start finding solutions probably when you have to dig deep and start saying, "What are we going to do? Because we don't have enough. We don't have enough money right now. So what are we going to do different?" And I think that sometimes that brings out some of the best solutions. I heard that one. I heard somebody say, "I just, I just hate property tax." You know, I, I fundamentally, and I think, I think that it's, it's pretty universal with us that we all, we all have a problem with property tax. I, I, I've, it bothers me. It bothers me when I hear individuals that say they pay so many thousands of dollars for a home and then they, they pay way more than that over the life of, they've been in the home for the, on taxes for the home too. That bothers me. It's, if there was something different that we could go to, I would love to have those ideas. I'd love to go down that path. But we're, but we can't right now, so that's kind of where we're at. Trust, trust in government. This is an interesting one for me because what, where are we with a level of trust? I, I remember a couple times yelling at my television years ago when I heard things were going on in government, you know, and, and some of the representatives. And I was, I was just upset at what I was hearing. And I could not believe that we were headed down this path. And I think we all feel that frustration of where government's at. So why, why do we, why does government always want to snap all the way back, all the way up? Why don't we take a step and prove the model? And the reason why is because these kind of meetings are tough. I mean, every single one of us up here, and granted, I didn't get as many insults thrown my way, but there was a few. And you hate, you hate to hear them. You don't want them. But you hate to go through this. But I think that's probably part of the process. You don't, we didn't slide into this thing over, over one year, if you want to, if you want to measure it just on the inflationary, but we want to snap it all back in one year. Why don't we try to say, you know, to ease some of the burdens we have, we have little steps that kind of get us back? And as we do so, the trust of the people comes back into what we're trying to do. I, I want to point out one thing that, that Deneen Jackson, you know, said to me. We're talking about geo-bonds. And sometimes people are afraid of geo, but they're general obligation bonds. And, and it goes out to avoid, a vote of the people. That's one that goes out to the vote of the people. And, and then if, if we can, if we say, "This is what we need it for," and the people agree, then the tax raises up during that period of time. And then once, let's say we're going for a building and over 20 years or 30 years, the tax comes back off. It's very defined on what happens. Utah County historically has done an excellent job with geo-bonds. They actually pay them off a little bit early even. And so I appreciate that we have those opportunities. We have no geo-bond debt right now, none at all. But we should look at that. We should look at doing, doing those things instead of putting a tax on for something into the future that we all know will be robbed by some future commission. We know it will. There's a bucket of money out there, it gets sucked away. Yeah, I mean, that's a perfect example. Somebody talked about reinventing the wheel, looking, looking at it from different points of view. I, I agree, you know, ideas need to come up. They need to be, you know, vetted through. And I don't, I can't see the clock, so I have no idea how much time. 25 seconds. So I want to, I want to say this. I truly believe, even though between the three of us, or maybe between me and the other two, we have a, a, a trust issue that has, has developed that is, that is problematic. I do truly believe that if we could sit down and kind of work down through this, I think we could find, find solutions more than putting up walls and barriers. I appreciate what they do. I appreciate their, their perspective. And I'll leave it at that.
Yes, we hear motion on the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this 3-0. Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the other agenda items.
After hearing the, hearing the public, I would like to make a motion that we continue item number 16, 16, number six, on our agenda, which is to approve and adopt the resolution authorizing the collection of the additional tax for one week.
I'm curious, Commissioner Lee, what you feel we can discover within that one week that we haven't already discussed over the course of the last two months?
Well, I'd hope that, you know, with, with more dialogue that we have heard from, from the public, maybe we can also, we can, we can notice some public meetings in which we can sit down. Now that, this is the, this is actually the first day in which we have seen each other, well, I'm talking about myself and Tanner's proposal. First day, first day that we have actually seen these different proposals. It would be nice, I think, to be able to sit down and get an under, at least an understanding. I don't know if we'll get, get to a consensus, I just don't. But I think it would give us an opportunity to have dialogue on some of the reasons why, and maybe some of the reasons why not.
So, so here's part of my concern, and I'm not saying no. As I, I agree we've got these, and I've had the opportunity to look through them, and as I mentioned, we're not that far off on our expenditure. If you go through here, line item by line item, and I, I did so, and I have specifically highlighted those areas where, where there's differences. The first area there's a difference is the justice court. And I actually concur with you, Commissioner Lee, I think that the lower number and doing the immediate cut in the justice court is correct. You know, and then there's a small difference in the auditor, in the attorney's office, in non-departmental, in inner, inner-agency allocations, and the sheriff's enforcement, and the sheriff's wildland. But they're, in those particular instances, they're relatively minuscule. So when we address the, the actual expenditure component, one of the biggest, the only real big questions are surrounding whether or not we fully fund ADAPT, or whether we make ADAPT come out of their reserves, or whether we partially fund that Proposition 3 mandate and make them partially come out of their reserves. So I think there's certainly an ability in tonight's meeting with all of these people here to work through these numbers and to showcase the areas that we do have some consistency. And so I would like that process with the public here, so that we're not coming back on another evening and dragging them back again, to hear us actually work through those particulars. If we get to that, through that component, and we go, "Oh, you know, I think you're right, maybe there's some more creative solutions on the revenue side," or something like that, that we need to look at, I would be happy to, to at that point, continue the discussion. But with the body and the interests that we have tonight, I would like to, to go through and try and finalize some of these expenditure numbers, and showcase, particularly for the public, from my perspective, how actually very close we are on what we believe this county needs to spend money on. And I had the opportunity to do that all afternoon, and I wanted to talk about those this evening. And so that's my hesitancy there. Does that make?
Yeah, sure, I think that's.
So let's, so let's jump in for a minute. I mean, Commissioner Lee, so I'm looking at your, I have a budget that the total revenues is 105 million, 104.9. And you've, you've got a budget here that's 102 million, or 101.9. And so this is, this is a new development for me. I mean, I actually, I listen to your town halls online, and so I, and I noticed that you started to, to, you know, as you worked through your cuts, realized that maybe there still is a hole to fill, and it looks like you do have a $3.8 million property tax increase. Is this, can you express what changed there, or just confirm that you're willing to do that?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, so the difference is, yours is 19.8 million dollars. And as I went down through it, looking for, you know, some savings on it as well, and came down to it, the 3.8 million, 3.821188 was a, was a number I came to, and I thought, in going through it, that that's, that's, that's a number in which we do a, we do a step.
Okay, the step increase. And I, and I just want to thank you for coming to that point. I think one of the initial parts that happened in our first public meeting was that, you know, that's what's hard, is I think for sometimes the public, they see the, the budget process as brand-new. For me, I see the budget process as a continuation of work done all year long. And so I knew that there wasn't any chance in the world, and I felt like all of us knew, that we were able to fill our deficit hole without some additional revenue. And so when that, we had that initial meeting, and you said there wasn't any amount, I think that was hard, because it was, it was hard to find a common ground. It didn't feel like you were trying to fill that hole. But this, now you're acknowledging that, yeah, we can find cuts, we can find other ways, but there is a hole that needs to be filled.
You know, it's, it's interesting, and hopefully we can have a civil dialogue with this.
Absolutely.
When we, when we started off, when, when I, when I got that 127%, and I call it, and you hear it on, you hear it all the time, this, we built this, we built this, I call it a financial tower of terror, which went all the way up to $36 million. And without going through a budgeting process that we're going through now and looking at. So it looked like it was designed for a scare tactic. And when I, when I saw 127%, you know, I know how to do horse trading too. And I said, "I'm starting at zero." "Well, we're at 100%." "I'm still at zero." Now, there was an opportunity in there that I gave Commissioner Ivy, when he said, "Well, what if we just kind of kept at the 10 million mark?" I don't know if you noticed it or not, but I said, "Is that a motion?" And the reason why I said that is because I was saying, "Hey, listen, let's, let's get this down into a reasonable way that we can start talking about it on a cap basis." And so I, I put it out there. Yes, I want to go down through it, I'm trying to be reasonable too. You know, I do start with a no. I mean, there was that, that one gentleman that was upset that I start with no's. And I do. I mean, when it comes to property taxes, this is, as a commissioner, will probably be one of the most long-lasting, affecting things that happens, that we do as county commissioners. And I, I, I want to do it very deliberately, with everything on the table as much as possible. And so I think, I think that's great. So yes, as, in going down through this thing, you're coming off the 100%, I'm coming up from the 0%. I think that's reasonable. That's what we do, is, is try to find some reason in that. And I've said that in the town hall meetings as well as I've been there.
I'd, I'd like to flip the page if we can, and start with some of these areas I've highlighted, and get some of your feelings on, to see if we can't build some consensus here. On the first page here, we've got the commission. We, we both essentially agree with that number, it's 1.1, there's a couple thousand here there, right, that we're looking at in a difference. The first place I noticed a significant difference was in the justice court. And Commissioner Ainge, you had that at 1.435, and Commissioner Lee, you actually had that at 1.035. And if I understand that correctly, it's because, from your perspective, we can eliminate that judge. I know from listening, Commissioner Ainge's thought is, is you might be hesitant to do that upfront. Actually, my, my feeling on this would be, I would like to go ahead and pull the cut in that staffing level. And if, in the instance that Commissioner Ainge has recognized, our, our attorney does start pushing more people that way, we can always hire somebody back, right? Or hire, hire a new individual, and there might actually be some cost savings in that whole process there. And so for me, I would actually be very easily to get on board with that justice court number of 1.035, 592, right? Given the understanding that if we see the increase, the numbers rebound, as, as is potential, that we can then act in that manner to replace that. And I think that it's probably going to take a year to see that pan out anyway, and so we would address that in our budget next year, as we, as we officiate through those numbers. The next one that I noticed is.
Can I just make one comment?
Go for it.
I've been, I've tried to be careful in, because I think there's a lot of great ideas. I have a whole list, and I think Commissioner Lee had some great ideas. But I have never wanted to include in my budget anything as a cut, unless I knew for a fact that it would come to fruition. And so this one was closer to, I think, us knowing, but I just want to confirm, like, do we know the process of actually decommissioning a judge? Because what we can't do is, we can't unfund this department, and then it takes a year to get that decommissioned, and we still.
This numbers are not decommissioning a judge. It's keeping the judges.
Okay.
Implies. It's, it's, what's happening is, it's the staffing, the staffing level underneath. Because when we look, when we look at, when we look at the, the amount of, let's call it revenue coming in from the justice court, we hired a second judge based off of increased cases, increased caseload and so forth. We have dropped significantly below that. And so it makes sense that you can't, you can't, if we're below that level in which we first started to hire, that something's off on that. And so the first step would be, let's see if we can, why do we have double staff in there for two judges if our caseloads aren't high enough for it?
And Dave, from a legal perspective, you feel like we can act upon that particular cut fairly quickly?
Well, with regard to the judges themselves, you would not be able to act on that quickly.
Okay.
Because that's a whole process.
As a whole process, but within the other staffing levels, you feel like there is a relatively quick process to rip those positions and move through that?
Subject to objection from the administrative office of the courts, so those would have to be reviewed, so I don't know how immediate those could be. There may be objections to that cutting. If it still meets the needs, then we would expect that we would be able to do that.
Right. And that's, and I really appreciate your approach on that, Tanner. And this is where it gets frustrating, trying to make cuts in government, because as you just heard, we now have to go through a very lengthy process to try and take care of this. Unlike in the private sector, when I don't like what you're doing, I can generally fire you. But, but this is an area, I feel, that we've got to find some savings, simply because of the decrease in numbers. And so, in conjunction with your continuance, I think that's probably an area we need to pin down an exact timeframe, that that could become actualized. And I think we could probably do that, working with Rob and HR, within a week. The next one I had was the auditor's office. And here, the auditor, there was a small difference. I've got Commissioner Ainge at $2,096,000. Commissioner Lee, you're actually at $2,104,000. I was just wondering what the, Commissioner Lee, where you felt you were spending a little more in the auditor's office there?
You know, just going down through that and trying, and adding it up, and listen to their presentations on that, that was, you know, that was a number, it's, it's not, it's not a number that, again, just going through the process and adding it up. There's an $8,000 difference.
Eight thousand dollar difference, and for me, just kind of trying to be simple-minded, and I went, I went, "Well, Tanner's number's lower, I like that one better."
Yeah.
Right? And so that would be an area I felt like we could tag that itemized number and go with Tanner's number, because he'd simply found some additional savings. I recognize we're talking, what, $8,000? But $8,000 in the end makes a difference when we go through this process holistically.
It does. I think we have to kind of get to the end, the end though, before, because there's, there's significant money in a restricted account, you know, that, that could fill the rest of these. So I, I'm, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not, well, if, if we're going down in one, anyway.
I think you're making a fair point, right? Because yours doesn't have as significant a restricted account.
I don't have that on the very end.
Right.
So if we put it in a restricted account, and we have a large restricted, that then can just go back, fill everything. I'm trying, I was trying to get, I think, more to.
Each department.
Each department. And so you might see some differences, that's the reason why we see those differences, probably possible.
And that's fair. In the attorney's office, we've got $11,977 from Tanner, and 12.1 from you. Again, would you attribute that to the same kind of a factor? Maybe we're holding some in restricted? Or is there maybe a consensus to just say, "Hey, we found a lower number over here with Tanner"?
Yeah, so, so this one, when I add it up, and I was, I was trying to go through it with Deneen too, and maybe, Deneen, if you can jump in with this one. When we add them up, and we do office space, and what was, what was the third one that was in there? Office space, the attorneys, the, oh, it goes back to the, the forensic. So, so I was pulling the forensic specialist, it used to be underneath the attorney's office. I was pulling that back into the attorney's office, which then gives you a higher number.
Okay.
So the offset on that one was pulling it back into the attorney's office.
The attorney's office. And Commissioner Ainge, I'm assuming then you would probably just left that forensic with the sheriff's department?
Yes.
And that was kind of, my, my plan on this particular budget cycle was just to leave that in place there, rather than doing a bunch of shuffling around as we're already going through some significant change in the office, so.
So, I mean, if that was, if that was the case, then, then there would have to be, if, if that was two commissioners that said good to that, then there would have to be a decrease in that.
And that's, so I would, I'd be fine leaving it with the sheriff, and then we'd just, simply, we'd just, I'd then again arrive at the same $11,970 number, as Tanner has highlighted there. The next one I had a question on was the non-departmental. Tanner came in at, at $3,173,000. Commissioner Lee, you were at $3,487,000, so again, a little higher on these non-departmentals.
Again, I think this one is a factor of, I'm trying to get to a number without, in a restricted. So it's probably, that's the reason why you're going to see a little bit different in, different number there.
And that's fair. And the inner, inner-agency allocations, again, Commissioner Lee was slightly lower there at 7.9, and you were at 8 million. So is that, are you contributing that back to the?
See, what you're on.
So, inner, inner-agency allocation.
We had, we had 7.9. So it's, it's $98,000. I'm, I'm lower by $98,000 on that one.
That's, you're correct there, so. And again, probably, any thoughts on where that disparage is there?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure where, I mean, going, unless we were going down through it line by line, let's see, trying to see 899, 91.
I'm a little bit lower there, and I think the reason might be extension.
Okay.
Well, this is elections, right?
Inter, oh, inter-agency allocation.
Oh, you're an inter-agency. So, on the, on the elections, though.
No, we've both, we've both taken out extensions, so that's the difference, is the total contract amount.
Total contract amount for USU. Okay. Now we're doing elections. I've got, I've got elections, Tanner at 2.6.
So wait, we gotta go back to the USU extension, though? Because I, I don't know if we've settled on a number on that. That's, that's blank on contracts and so forth. And I believe.
It looks like you may have just taken their budgeted amount.
Taken.
And put it into inter-agency.
And put it in your agency.
And I took less than the budgeted amount.
Right.
Because there's savings on the rent, we don't know the total rent number. And then I also felt like there were savings in a lot of those administrative overhead costs, like our IT charges, that went back to them. So what I was trying to do is keep hold the 4H funding.
STEM program.
STEM and 4H.
And then, and then that's a difference too, is, to me, I was willing to cut the STEM program for 4H.
Yeah, I'm not on that one. I was trying to make it, keep it whole all the way through, except for that one position that we know is gone.
And I think that's commonplace here.
And any savings that we could possibly get through.
Based on my understanding of our rent agreement, that 90-plus thousand probably comes through rent savings and some computer IT stuff, right? But we're, we're leaving whole the 4H program, with the exception of the one position is gone, which I would concur with.
Which would be the STEM program and 4H and everything.
Right. That makes, same page?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the STEM position is, there's actually a great individual in that position, but I don't think it's a necessary government function, and I was willing to cut it. I mean, for the benefit of the public, these are some of those examples, where, I actually probably got about 700 emails from folks when we started having this conversation about 4H. I think it's a great program, it supports our community, but in a tough budget cycle, everything is, everything's on the table. And that STEM program has not, it was a pilot program, it's not something, it's actually only Utah County offers it, and then I think Cache County had it. And they haven't been like blown away with the results of the pilot. And so I was willing to drop off that position. So that, that's my view, but it sounds like the other two might be.
Commissioner Lee, I think I'm in concurrence with you here, that this is actually, is the STEM program something I'd like to see continue. Would you, you feel the same? And, and then on elections here, we've got 2.6 and 2. And, and then on elections here, we've got, uh, two point six and two point five. And I, I just put a question mark by that. I was, I was curious on that one.
So that, that one, I'm, I'm lower by ninety-eight, ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Ninety-eight thousand dollars lower there. Uh, where were you finding that savings?
Yeah, I was. Let me see the differences here. There's a little bit, there's a little bit in personnel.
Because I had Tanner at eight ninety-nine in personnel and you at eight ninety-one, so there's a couple of.
It came in materials and supplies. I was at one point three.
You're at one point three.
Three-four versus one point four-five-five.
Right. And do we, and that would be my question in that one. And, and because for me, part of my biggest concern with elections was ensuring that we had some additional materials there. Uh, that offices work so hard at modernizing and bringing a lot of innovation, innovative practices there. I was curious if you remembered what particular supplies, uh, you, you thought were unnecessary for them.
Yeah, I remember going down through, I just, I just remember, uh, when I was, when I was looking at it, thinking that, I, I don't necessarily think we always have the, have to be the, have the top of the best adequate for what we're trying to accomplish, I think is, is more along the lines of where I was thinking with that. And so there was that reduction.
And that's, I think that's fair. Part of my reason for being willing to support the additional ask and the other mil, uh, other materials and supplies was I knew that that office had gotten creative. They'd gone to eBay. Uh, Josh, you could remind me a couple, you like went and bought a bunch of used equipment, wasn't it, from like San Francisco City or something that was, took a little, Commissioner Lee's reuse it, uh, scenario he used early. And so I felt some comfort knowing how frugal that department had been in, in refining and rehashing materials there. And that was why I was comfortable with, with giving them that additional ask there.
Okay.
The next one I, I noticed was, was the enforcement number. Uh, Commissioner Ainge was slightly lower there. Twenty-one point two eighty and Commissioner Lee, you're twenty-one point two sixty-nine?
He was, he was slightly lower.
Oh, you are slightly lower. It's highlighted from a difference. These beautiful, small numbers. Let's see if you could identify quickly the difference there.
The sheriff, the sheriff one, if.
Go ahead, yeah.
This is an interesting one because, I mean, the, we don't have materially different budget proposals in the sheriff's department. But, um, can you speak, Commissioner Lee, to the ICE? Because on the revenue side.
Yep.
You were, you took four and a half in, but then you didn't increase the sheriff's budget.
Right. So with the ICE, the ICE contract, let me pull up, let me pull up my pages here too. So with the ICE contract, which we had for years, and then we had the former sheriff come in and explain, and others were saying, you know, with federal contracts, they're kind of wash-through contracts. This is, this is, this is part of the problem that I'm having is that if you have four and a half million dollars in revenue and it's, and it's offset, and, and, and that's, and that revenue comes in so that you can have a program in place, be it whatever, overtime, uh, equipment, and you're, and that's, so you've got four and a half million dollars and four and a half million dollars. If you take that four and a half million dollars away and get rid of it, you've got to do something with the expenses. That, that's just, it does not make any sense. Now, I heard, I heard, well, well, it, it was offset with, with personnel. We fully, we fully staff, we fully fund the staffing personnel. So where did that four and a half million go? I, I, for the last years, I've been asking that question. Where's the four and a half million dollars? Now, I did get this, this printout, which somebody said there was a typo mistake. It was a typo mistake that, the reason why we got this printout from the sheriff's department. But I don't know how you can have a, a type out, a typing mistake when it, when it's line by line and it says deputies, thirty hours, six times twenty-four hours a day times, you know, and it goes all the way across. And then it says meals and it has, and it comes all the way down to an expense number. And the expense number, you know, uh, total expense on this thing is two point four-five million dollars with the estimated revenue of three point nine-five-five on this one, which gave us a balance or a total of one point four-nine-five. It, it just doesn't make sense to me all along the process that we had four and a half million dollars in revenue and it just disappeared. And then with their own numbers on here, which I don't know how you can say that's a typo when it's line itemed out, that there's two and a, two and a half million dollars. And so on my proposal, I didn't quite know what to do with this. And I still don't.
Okay.
It's a problem because if we're saying four and a half million in revenue and four and a half million in expense and it goes, what do we do with that? But with this one here, I was, that's why I have it as an, as an option, one or the other. The other one was, well, what about the two and a half? Because I could see that there was hard costs that possibly could be in there. If, if, if we're paying for, you know, the, the jail or part of the bond, I don't even know if that's true or not. But where, where, where those hard costs are, you don't eliminate them. They're going to be there if the ICE contract's there or not. There's still some costs that some department has to pick up. Or some area has to pick up with revenue. So when I, when I look at that, that's what I said is, again, we have got to have some conclusion with this at some point in time on, on where this is at. Because this, this one, not this one only, but this one and some other decisions that happened back then in twenty seventeen, you see a direct correlation of us dipping in and below our revenues. That's the same year. The same year we went down is the same year we did not take off any expenses. And so it has to correlate somewhere. Somewhere it has to be paid. Uh, granted, it's not the only one. We had a problem. We have a problem with, uh, with Highline and Workday and there were some added costs in there.
Right, there's an added cost there.
So I'm not trying to say it's, it's the only issue. But if you take even this projected estimates of, of the expenses out, all of a sudden, we're back up to even again. We're not in that, that spending of our surplus monies that had been generated over the years. So that's the reason why I, I bring it up over and over because it's problematic.
And I appreciate that. Part of my question is, in trying to deal with the real numbers of this budget season, do you have a contract offer from the federal government that we can put on the agenda next week or the week after to sign to ensure that we're getting an ICE contract? And additionally, in the unfortunate, extremely unfortunate event that we end up with Elizabeth Warren as president, are we comfortable budgeting to allow the federal government into our jail, given that scenario? That, that's where, I, I'm not disagreeing that historically, looking back, that there's some unanswered questions with the ICE contract. But my concerns, first and foremost, can, do we have a letter from the federal government saying that it's even an option?
Well, we don't.
And second, in the event of an Elizabeth Warren presidency, and again, this is a worst-case scenario, I know, and it would be a nightmare. But I am personally very uncomfortable relying on the federal government for that money and, and a long-term trust in the federal government to deliver that. And that's, that's where I start to really pull back and go, I don't want them in my jail. I, and I definitely do not want to depend on them for budgeting. And as we've talked about, we'd like to move into more of a multi-year budgeting process so that we're doing better planning for the long term. And so that's where I get a lot of pause on this, on this particular item.
So we don't. The federal government is basically begging us, from what I hear, you know, to do something, and they'll even pay higher. Do I, do I, do I trust that or do I like that? I, I don't. I, I was one of them that said, you know, according to the risks that we have and what I see in there. I was one of the commissioners that said, yeah, let's get out. It doesn't make any sense. And so that's what we did. I was part of that. With an understanding that something else was going to happen. That something else has not happened. And so the only way we can have this conversation is to have this conversation with a full context of what's going on. And if we don't have that full conversation, uh, of what's, what's going on with it, or we just say, oh, it was a typo, or oh, these line, what, how they told us we were going to get out, it didn't really come to, come to pass. If we don't hold them accountable, if we don't hold the departments accountable when they, when they bring this to us, we'll never hold them accountable in the future if, if that's going to happen. I mean, I, I was, I, multiple times I, I, I was told, well, if we don't fund this or do this that way, I resign. And it's like, fine, resign. I mean, we went through that, you and I, both of us, we know.
I under, I understand. And, and I guess that's, you know, that's part of why I asked those questions and, and, and why I have the hesitancy. For me personally, on, on the sheriff's department in the recovery of the two and a half million, from my conversations with the current sheriff and the past sheriff, part of the real problem here was the significant understaffing to begin with. And so it wasn't like they had a lot to give back to start with. Because they went into this contract understaffed, they manned it primarily through overtime and burnt the morale out. And they're still twenty deputies short and significantly understaffed. And so their problem was consistent throughout. And that's kind of been my take from, from both, in my communications with both sheriffs. So when I'm trying to go to them and say, give me two and a half million back because this contract's gone, one, I don't think the contract was really making us two and a half million. And two, I think that it was being funded, or excuse, not necessarily funded, but it was being managed and manned through an already depleted workforce in that department. And so that's, that's, that's why I'm like, I have a hard time saying, well, you need to cut more people when you're already short people.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Again, my preference is not necessarily to go back into the ICE contract. It's, it's the conversation that we need to have with this. And, and, and how we solve this problem because it has caused us problems. Uh, no matter which way we look at it, we can see how our revenue and how our expenses and that dip happened. And it's, and it's, and we see it. We see it in our, we see it show up. And so we need to address it somehow, some way. And if we address it by saying we're going to hold the line on this thing and we're going to find the money through, you know, our conservative budgeting processes with the sales tax or anything, and that's how we're going to make up the difference so we don't hurt, hurt the jail or the, that's great. Maybe we should go that route. But I don't want to raise taxes necessarily, you know, to cover what I think was a mistake in the past on holding that line. I'd rather find it through efficiencies or through conservative budgeting processes.
But, but you would concur though, that we can't really count on budgeting the money that we don't know is there?
Well, we can't, I mean, we don't have a contract. There's no way. We don't have a contract for it. The only, the only other option was, you know, where are we going to find the two point four million dollars?
Okay.
So, I mean, I think for the benefit, what's hard is these budgets weren't published. And so really, this is oversimplifying because your expenditures are, I think in total, a few million dollars less. But for, for simplicity, pretty similar total expenditures. The difference is I fund the full amount with a tax increase. You fund a portion with a tax increase, a portion with four and a half million dollars that is scheduled to come from the ICE contract, which we're saying is not going to happen. So we got to fill that gap. And then the other portion coming from the sale of the property. And so if we take the ICE contract revenue out, that's either deficit spending or you bring the tax increase up by four and a half million dollars from where you are right now. Right? So that's, that's the scenario that we're in.
And that's, 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 that's true. I would, I would hope that we'd have conversation enough to, you know, to say, uh, again, it's, you're right. I mean, the sense of going from three and a half million to seven and a half.
Right.
Right? On that end. Now, on the other end though, when we're talking about the sale of the property, those are, those are things that are not absolutely needed. We're talking about, those are going into, you know, a fund balance or, uh, risk management. I can't remember what that was for sure. But those, those are areas that we've put restraints on ourselves. They're, they're not things that we're saying that are mandated or that we're, we're, we're out of balance with. I mean, we have twenty percent in our, in our fund balance right now in the way of savings or rainy day fund. And so that balance, we've tried to restrict ourselves. That's the best-case scenario. Got it. I would love to, I would love to be there. That's the rea, there's a reason why I voted for those things. I would like us to get there. But I don't want us to get there with one full swoop of just raising taxes to get there. I think we can do it incrementally and get there. And so if we want to go from the three point eight and say, okay, we can't do it with the, the ICE contract with that four point five, right? We don't have the contract. Uh, I don't know how we take it out with, with, with hurting, you know, the sheriff's department. Maybe, maybe we look back and say, there's a few more cuts we need to make there just to, just to try to start that process. But, uh, maybe on the lower ones in which we were looking at, you know, them overall. And try to find efficiencies through, um, through our, our, our conservative budgeting practices into the future. Um, I, I could probably go there. I could probably get there.
So, so if we're, we're at, you're three point eight plus the ICE contract added back in, we're at eight point three million in additional revenues through, through the property tax increase. Is that?
With those two?
With those two.
I haven't added up.
Right, so.
Sounds, sounds right.
Right, and this, so based on Commissioner, your baseline proposal there, right? It's, it's at the three point eight number. With the four and a half, we're, we're at, you know, roughly eight point three. And then the question for me, I think we're getting really close, right? Because, uh, Commissioner Ainge, I think that's your property tax above certified rate number is eight point eight with an additional three hundred thousand from recorder fees. Am I reading that correctly?
Oh, you're, you're not. That's, that's, that's coming off the hundred percent by eight point eight. So the third column, it's the nineteen million.
Wrong column. So we're at nineteen point eight. So we're getting close.
So we're eleven million off. We're eleven million off and three of that is from spending and eight of that is what you're saying would come from the sale of the property.
Right.
Right?
And if we don't want to go, now, now, uh, I want to make this clear though, because the sale of the property, total package of the property is ten million dollars. So that's been bumped down. I bumped that down on just an estimate level to eight point one million dollars. Not selling the Equestrian Center itself. Not selling the, not selling the facilities or the arena itself.
So, so here's my question on that. And we're taking the public feedback that I've received significantly on that. What if we were to use TRCC funding to purchase that park? Because that's the point of TRCC, is to provide tourism, recreation and cultural activities in our county. I think when you, it's a tax I don't particularly love, but it's there, right? And so if the TRCC fund is to purchase that.
For who?
To, for the public, for the county.
I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can purchase it.
And, and this is.
I don't think we can purchase it for ourselves.
This is part of, well, but it's, that's, this is why I'm having this conversation is, is we're, you asked us for you, right? To come up with out-of-the-box thinking. Here's my out-of-the-box thinking. I've received significant public input that they would love to see that as a public park. If the TRCC can purchase that park, because it was originally purchased with general fund monies, correct, Dave? And that's, might look to the auditor's office. Because we bought it clear back before TRCC even existed. And so I'm pretty comfortable saying that. If TRCC in conjunction with, certainly if we can't buy it as a county, Highland, Lehigh and American Fork can apply for the TRCC funding and buy it as a tri-city park through the TRCC, right? And, and so it remains a public park as been, as been expressed by the public.
Right.
And it gives us that shortfall. And, and we can then put that money back in, into our, into our tax, you know.
See, I like that.
Back into there. And then all of a sudden, we're getting at a much more comfortable number for the tax raise that I think has been expressed by the public. And, and we're still addressing some of our, our long-term needs, particularly in our building areas. Because we can dedicate that money back into capital improvements, we can put it into restricted and tightly manage it in, in that method. It's not ideal. We might be back here in three to five years instead of seven to eight. But I think it, it takes it at a more incremental step.
Well.
And brings that money while securing it as a public asset.
That money does, isn't going towards anything that is ongoing.
And, and I agree. That money can't go to ongoing expenses.
Those, those, it's only going to, we, we have it in there for, you know, two million dollars for three years or six million dollars all up front, whatever the case may be. And so, um, if that's even, if that's possible, I mean, I'd love to have the cities look at that for management purposes and everything else.
I know the cities are, I know American Fork, I've met with them. They're happy to, to do something there. And, and I know, uh, I talked to Mayor Johnson on the phone about it and he's like, we'd love to help participate somehow, but we're probably not going to be able to come up with that kind of a, of a large land purchase because they purchase some other park properties.
I mentioned the same thing to the, to the horse, the horse community the other day.
Right, but I think that, that we can work with those three municipalities in our TRCC funding and, and find a solution there that keeps that a public entity, as Ben expressed, that there's a strong desire for it to be such, but help us with our budgetary issue. And then we're, we're at a consensus number at the eight point three. And that could go, you know, up or down as we look at this in the next week and the specific expenditures. And, but when I'm saying up or down, it's not going to be a huge number. But when I'm saying up or down, it's not going to be a huge number.
My biggest issue with that is, I just want to make sure, I think that makes sense. I had already explored the TRCC option as well, wasn't sure of the legalities, we should check through that. But the, I want to make sure that we're not doing something like that to fund ongoing expenses.
Ongoing expenses, and that's, all three of us express that exact same feeling.
And this would be one that we could take, and we can look at. I mean, Dave's kind of nervous about it, so.
Yeah.
Dave, you don't need to be nervous about it, we can find a way. We were instructed by the people to be creative. And David Levitt's smiling at me, so that means David Levitt can be creative.
You know, I think that the other issue with that is, we didn't get a lot of time to go into all of our presentation issues, but one of my big issues has been to fund the, invest in the future accounts. So, that's our capital projects planning, that's our risk management, was another category, and then replenish the reserve. And that is one of the differences as well, the level of participation in those, between my budget and Commissioner Lee's budget. And just to give a little bit more color of risk management, this is also a little bit hard to talk about. We're airing everything out with the public tonight. But, you know, when I, I was aware of the operating deficits when I came to office. So, I was ready to try to work through, find cuts, and adjust rates if we needed to, to fund those deficits. I was not aware of how bad we were in terms of preparation for some of these other issues. So, the first thing I heard was, there's a lawsuit facing the county for a very significant amount of money. And in the business world, when you are aware of litigation, you reserve for it. That's what you do. In fact, if you don't, and you have audited financials, you know, technically, that could be, let's just say, a serious violation. So, the, I'm concerned about this. And I want to make sure that we have enough resources. We're already dipping right on the edge of compliance of our reserve fund. And if we end up having to use a significant amount of that related to litigation, then we're seriously depleting it. And so, it's just like the same old Dave Ramsey principle. You have an emergency fund, you don't use it for anything other than real emergencies. And when you have a known cost, you got to make sure we cover it. So, there's the risk management one. The other one is the capital planning. And Commissioner Lee, you made the point, I think we've all talked through it, the Taxpayers Association recommended that we get general obligation bonds for that. But I just want to be clear with the public, that one of the ways we were able to cut this down is by cutting out our capital needs. Because we're saying, we'll go to the voters. That's one area where the voters can choose yes or no, is on a general obligation bond. So, I'm okay with that. The voter, you know, let the people decide. Clearly, they've expressed, like, wherever possible, we should give a voice. But we are way behind. And the experience there was, we had all of our new elected officials come to us and say, we're running out of space, did an engineering study, and an architectural firm came back and said, it's going to cost 80, 90 million dollars for you to get up to speed on your capital planning needs. And I asked the question, how much do we have set aside? And the answer was, nothing. Which, again, was incredibly negligent over the years. And so, there's a real deferred need there, but I'm okay moving on from that, with the understanding, I've made the commitment that, hey, we're not going to come back for property taxes, and talk, I'm never going to talk about property tax increases as county commissioner. Again, except for the potential of a general obligation bond that the people have the right to say yea or nay on, or any capital needs.
Okay, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I, you know, I hear what you're saying. I disagree to a certain extent. When we, when we talk about capital projects, I, there's financing that goes on with it. If we are going to go along and raise taxes to put money into accounts that we're going to build over a certain amount of years, and who knows if we're in office or not, I've seen them braided over, and over, and over, and we never get there. And we're not doing an MBA, we're going to do a, we're doing a general obligation. And so, I love the fact that we're going to go back to the people, and ask the people if they agree with what we're trying to do on this. And they may say no. That's the fear. That's always the fear of anybody, is that you take it to the people, and they say, nope, that is too much. You're going to have to go back to drawing boards and cut that back down. We're not going to have 10-foot-high ceilings, and crown molding, and everyone with their own offices, and restrooms. So, I think that's a healthy process. When we're talking about risk management on that, none of us, when it came to some of the things that we're looking at, which we can't talk about, were a part of this, but we're getting the blame of a lot of what's going on with what, with some of this risk that's out there. Now, we've been working on it to see where our actual risk is, and our risk has come down significantly, in my opinion, from where we were first projecting where that can be. Some of those things can be picked up through efficiencies along the way, too. I don't know if we raise taxes, which stay on permanently, so that we can put it into a risk management fund. I would prefer us to see if we could do it through efficiencies, and try to bolster that up. We can, with the sale of the property, though, put money into there. There was like 1.7, I can't remember what it was, now, 1, oh, 0.7?
Yeah, yeah.
0.7, 0.7, 0.7 in there. We can put that kind of money in, and that's a one-time jump for us to see where we're at, and then adjust accordingly and necessarily as we go along.
And I would be very, very, I feel it's very prudent of us to put some type of money into a risk management account. It's a line-item thing. Sure, they can rob from it, but they're going to have to justify it. And I think that's good financial practice. I would concur with both of you, that I think when it comes to our long-term building needs, that that's a general obligation bond, and that we have to go make the case to the voters to justify that. And part of the reason I feel comfortable in doing that is because we've been doing a lot of building needs assessment currently, since Commissioner Ainge come on board. And one of the things that he did, when, you know, there was, we got this study back, and it was like the $90 million building, and all three of us, I want to make this very clear, all three of us were like, no. We are not building a Taj Mahal of Utah County Government. And Commissioner Ainge actually went out into the surrounding area, and actively looked at some existing buildings that we could potentially buy, that would save us a bunch of money. And so, I feel confidence that the three of us can work together in that capacity, when that time arises, to find a proper space for the county that is fiscally prudent, and that we can make that case. So, I'm okay with that, and would concur with that. And I think that if we identify this, we've got 8.3, if we put 500,000 more here for risk management on the tax increase side, we brought an additional 500,000, or 700,000 from the property sale through the TRCC process, we're there. We've built, we've built the million dollars into some risk management, which I concur, Commissioner Ainge, is needed to cover us on some known. This isn't unexpected, this is some known exposure to the county. We've built that in, and through efficiencies, if we feel it's appropriate, we can add to that fund going forward, as we develop our multi-year budgeting cycle. We've minimized the tax burden that we're placing on the citizens, and we're ensuring that that property sale is not going to ongoing expenses. And from my rough estimate, I think we're there at a consensus on that particular number.
Yeah. One thing that I'll, I look forward to looking through these in more detail. This might explain some of my perspective on things. Maybe Commissioner Lee and I see it differently, or you and I see it differently. You know, my background, my, what I did for the last decade was buy and sell companies, either as an investor, or as an attorney representing investors. And when you find a company, they might say, oh, they have no debt. And Utah County doesn't really have a debt problem. But if you buy a company, and say, oh, I have no debt, but our factory needs $500,000 upgrade before it's functional again. And, oh, we have a lawsuit for a million dollars. That company really has 1.5 million dollars of debt. And if that company is also showing, hey, it's making a profit, but all of the workers are going to leave if they don't get a bonus that was promised to them the next year, then you have some additional debt. And so, that's what I want to be clear. My goal all along on this is to get our county back on track, that is, we have no long-term obligations. And so, when I came in, and I saw some of that risk management exposure, and the capital needs, I view that as a debt obligation. And that's why it's so hard on us, is it's unfair when previous commissions kick the can down the road, and get, leave it with us. Because we all know, if we were just operating steady state, we would not be going through this process. And if we did, every so often, it would be a minor adjustment, or even just freezing the rate, so that it doesn't go down. And we'd get that assessed value increase. But it's because of debt, like the deferred CapEx and the risk management, that we're talking about such a, in my mind, that's why I'm talking about such a big increase. So, I just want to see, and last year, the budget process, some of the commentary kind of turned into, and I would just hate for this to become the process of, let's just see if we can get through next year. And I know that that's responsive to some of the concerns we've heard from the public tonight, is, cut, 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 see if you can get through the year. But that's not, in my mind, the best governance strategy. We should be looking for the next 10 years, and what's right for our county. And so, that's just my caution, but I like where this is going, and I think that we can find consensus. But that's the only reason why I'm hesitant to, I don't want to go do it incremental this year, incremental next year. I'm fine saying, let's do a little less, let's insist on cuts, and making sure that this is still a one-time solution, right? And maybe not as big of a solution. But I don't want to say, let's do a partial increase, but we still have a bunch of obligations that we don't know how we're going to take care of.
Right. And Commissioner Lee, I see you nodding. I think that we're probably getting to a point where we could agree on that. If we can get this 8.3 number, maybe it's 8.9, somewhere right in there. But we factor those other items in. I think, Commissioner Lee, would you agree that that's very reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, I like this conversation, too. I think it starts getting us to where we're actually having some good conversations, instead of hurling insults at each other, or whatever the case may be. But, and it's going to be painful in multiple different ways. I think government on its own should not be way out front. I think that causes its own problems. I think we should have a little bit of a lag behind. And remember, we do have, I think it's, how much do we have in the fund balance right now? Is it 18 million, 20 million? I know it's about 20%. And so, there's money in there that is in the fund balance right now, and which, there's only 5% of that that actually state-mandated, has to be there. We have built-in cushions that are there for us, if needed and necessary. It's not, it's not like we're running right at the razor edge of this thing. We went through just our bonding, rate rankings, ratings, and, you know, and I sat through those, and we asked some pretty direct questions. And, you know, we got a double A-plus rating on there. And I asked our financial advisors a little bit about why, you know, how they look at a contract, because they actually pointed out in their, and you read their rankings, and they pointed out, that 4.5, this is not us doing it, this is an outside firm, that said, that's a problem. They pointed it out, and said, it's a problem when there's 4.5 revenue disappears like that, and where it's at. They're the ones that pointed it out. And so, I said, well, how does that affect our ratings into the first future? We don't want to be hurt on a financial basis, or an interest basis. And they said, well, Utah County is very stable, from their opinion. They're very stable. We do have columns in there, we do have silos in there, in which we might have, you know, some adjustments that need to be made. But they are looking at, saying, very stable.
And one of the things that's interesting, though, the only, one of the items that holds us back from taking that next jump is the fact that we've never addressed our truth in taxation process. So, there's, as we went through the process with Central Utah Water, one of the reasons their agency gets a big bump from their credit rating agencies is because that particular entity holds their certified rate consistent every single year. So, essentially, they raise their tax every single year, and that actually helps their rating, their bond rating, which is an interesting dynamic when we deal with bond ratings, is the fact that we actually do get a ding on our credit, because we've never gone through this process.
Well, the biggest ding we have is two universities with a lot of low-income-
That hurts, but, so, it's an interesting process. And what I hope that those of you who are left here are garnering, one, from this conversation, is we do actually work together. And two, is the fact that we have put a lot of effort into this, and looking into the long-reaching effects of these decisions, not only just on how do we pay for, you know, to keep the lights on tomorrow, but how does this affect our credit rating in the future? And what implications does this have for the long-term stability of county government? And I think that's something we're all concerned about. I think we're close. I think if we could kind of nod our heads at 8.3 to 9, do our homework on the sell of the property, that we could continue this for a week and be about there. Would you guys agree?
Yes, so, I think I still have a motion on there. I should probably, can I amend the motion?
We can renew it, I'd motion to continue.
I'll amend the motion. I make a motion that we continue items six and seven for one week.
We're in a special, sorry, we're in a special session, so-
Yeah, we will need to, we'll need to state date, time, location. I always just think of the rollover like we always do.
So, Tuesday?
So, we'll do Tuesday, Tuesday.
This top one? Commissioner Lee, is it okay if I ask a clarifying question? So, Dave, is, now that we have opened and closed the public comment, will this just be continued, just these items?
Just these items.
And can those be held in a normal commission meeting?
Yes, they can. Yeah, we'll just put it Tuesday, with our normal commission meeting.
So, I'll make a motion that the next public meeting in which Utah County will consider a budget and additional ad verum tax revenue will be on Tuesday, December 17th, at 9:00 a.m., at this location.
Second.
The motion is second? Yes, that was six and seven, correct.
Okay. We got a motion and a second to continue items number six and seven, to our next public meeting, Tuesday at 9:00. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. If it passes, 3-0. You have a motion?
Motion, adjourned. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank everyone for coming and staying.